We send a call, we thank you again for this people for staying here, we thank you for the blessings of life. Oh, we ask you just go with us during this meeting tonight and everything that we do, if you please, in your eyes, we just ask for God it. And we just ask you to bless this town and give us all praise in Jesus' name.
In the name.
Ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I think everyone's coming out tonight. This daylight saving change over. We did, I figured Sue today, but I got an email trying to send her to come through, I said I'm feeling on daylight saving. All right, we'll start off with the roll call. Curtis is back there, Miss Wendy is running around here somewhere. Okay, Miss Sue's here, Thomas here, Franklin's here, I'm here, Mr. Virginia's here, Ms. Sherry's here, and I'm blessed, Mr. Warren is here. And we have filling in for Gail, who is filling in today? Mark, there he is, I see him now. Okay, and. And have you had a chance to look over the agenda with the adjustments and everything?
Need approval of the agenda.
The proper means of saying it, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye, the carries. Uh, next up is the approval of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting.
I make the motion here, we're the minute from the town council meeting, the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I second.
Then again, we have a proper motion with second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying motion carries. All right, public participation, uh, to participate in any public, uh, if you want to speak, please complete the street request form and submit it to the deputy town clerk, Miss Wendy, wherever she can run around the area. Uh, at that time, we'd ask you, we will call you up and you will approach the podiums pretty clearly and state your full name and address for the record, and comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. First up tonight, who has already done his request, is Mr. Bill Brown. Bill, we're gonna, we're gonna let you talk first.
All right, it'll take me three minutes.
That's all. We got a little time to do that.
I want to command you, Mr. Mayor, and you council people, because with a political background, whenever the young man, I understand that this, I guess they've always been roses. So thank you for letting me be here. And, uh, I've wrote an invitation, but before you get it, I've got a couple of words I want to tell you. Sometimes people misunderstand the children, say, well, no, we feel we give out food, but we do other things too, and I want to make you aware of some of the things we do in the community. I'll just go down the list, since we've been on the hill, we have gone to five hurricanes. And when we go to hurricane, it means we take food, or we partner with somebody and cook food. For instance, in Panama City, under a contract with FEMA, we serve thirty-five thousand meals. Uh, we, uh, were active in this recent hurricane, uh, we, uh, provided, uh, five thousand one hundred people with foods, uh, in Perry, in Oshubli Beach, uh, in Old Town, and out at, uh, funny. And, uh, we've been back there a couple of times since, we've also gone to tornadoes up in Alabama. Uh, we have two programs that I want to briefly tell you about, one is an outreach program, and the other is a helping hand program. Our outreach program reaches out and helps other food factories that aren't quite as fortunate as we are. We provide them with food, and we give them a ten-month grant of five hundred dollars apiece to help them lift up their food pantry and work. We've, uh, have done that in several, well, we've done it in, uh, eight communities. Uh, one of which is Cedar Key, and, uh, we've been in others that are surrounding us here. Beyond that, with our helping hand program, uh, we reach out and touch individuals who suffer a crisis or hardship. Uh, we have helped in Levy County, we've helped the grandmother who took over the raising of some kids after a murder. And, uh, we take a five hundred dollar check and give them there. Uh, we have, uh, done, uh, several fires, one of which is right next door to us, and we give them a five hundred dollar check. We've done that twenty-three times since January. Uh, in addition to that, we've helped a food pantry, uh, we helped get the, uh, Cedar Key Food Pantry back together, located it up, and, uh, got them back in business. And we went by the local grocery store down there, and he had a sign up, he's going to go find me to get money so it can open up, we left him a thousand dollar check. In addition to that, I've pretty well covered what we do, we do give out food, we gave out, uh, two hundred and thirty families food this today. But, uh, I took and changed or worked with our numbers of bulk food that we gave out, and it came out in meals provided, uh, since January, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-three meals. So we, we are a little bit, we'll do a million meals by the end of the year, we are something besides, no place to get food. The reason I'm here is to invite all of you and the community to come to lunch with us the eighteenth of the month. That's the Saturday before Thanksgiving, we're going to have ham and turkey and all the trimmings, and we're going to try doing it down at the annex, everybody knows where that is, right next to the, uh. You have an invitation?
Yes, sir.
Coffee, hundreds of. We budgeted for five hundred meals, so we are going to feed at eleven, twelve, and also at one. Now, in addition to that, there will be churches picking up food and, uh, taking it back to their church. So this is a chance for someone to get better acquainted and to have a good time. So thank you for having to hear us, we appreciate it, and I'll close by saying, Robert, if your mother brings me any more strawberry preserve, I'll have to live to be a hundred years.
That's what we want you to do, see, that's what we want you to do, sir. Thank God. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Now, when you got about two hours, one day I'll tell you, the rest of the story that this, this man and I go back into, it goes a long ways back, right? Yes, sir. So, all right. Thank you, thank you again, Mr. Vino, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Vino.
Thank you, Mr. Vino.
All right, uh, next up, uh, Ms. Gussie is not here tonight, is that right?
She's not, and I apologize, I keep trying to get either, um, Natalie Thomas or Gussie, they both, I mean, Gussie's the chair of the Levy County Formal Housing Advisory Committee, and Natalie serves on it, I actually serve on that as well, um, but they always have a conflict with the, um, anyway, um, they always have a conflict with them, so I'm still trying to get somebody here, anybody attend the.
I went to, I attended the, um, the Affordable slash attainable housing seminar, it was wonderful, it was absolutely amazing. Um, they're gonna have another one at the beginning of the year, I'm hoping that we can advertise a little bit for them, it was a huge turnout. It majorly, huge turnout, it was a lot of information for individuals looking for, um, affordable housing, and then looking for, um, you know, to purchase housing. And then, uh, Mr. Whistler was there, Mr. Meeks was there, we got a lot of attendance, but it was great.
Okay, well, we'll hopefully go get them down, hold on. All right, it's my honor tonight to, uh, give out the scholarship of the month, or student of the month, I think that's what it's properly named.
Yes.
For, uh, the Bronson Middle High School and the Bronson, uh, you said Bronson Middle.
Well, it's a different month.
The dual of the month. Okay, thank God for that verification there, okay. So tonight, we are honored to present these awards to, and I will call out your name, and if you will come forward, we have, uh, Cam, did you all say that Cameron was not going to be?
Cameron and Adrian are both, that's no surprise.
Okay, we got, ball practice going. All right, then we got Adrian Brown.
He's at practice, he's at.
Everybody's at practice.
The first two for August of, yeah, the two for September of this year.
Okay, so then we've got Nolan Hankerson and Brandon Smith.
I'm just here to, sorry.
So y'all just stand right there in front of the podium, and she's gonna take the picture.
And thank y'all for coming, so do y'all.
Thank you.
All right, Brandon, there he is, your roof, I'll let you go over that. And I, here is yours, I'll let you go over that, and then, look at this too. And then here's the most important thing. Thank y'all so very much. Sherry, we will let you take care of the distribution of these other things, okay? Here is this one, Sue.
Adrian wanted to be here. I'm on a strict timeline with that, I'm at practice, right?
Okay. Additional information, the Brentford Divided Food Bank Global Food Drop is Wednesday, November the fifteenth, at nine thirty a.m. So that might not be in this regular scheduled time, it'll be before Thanksgiving holidays, okay? Uh, the Waukesha S. Award and Wasteport Clarkville War Meeting is Wednesday, November the fifteenth, at one p.m. in Cedar Key. You hear my plan? I will be ready, okay? Uh, the.
There's a change in the venue, it is normally at their.
Yes.
Water and sewer district.
Universe before, it is.
I don't know if that's called IFIS.
IFIS research.
Research.
Research, because it's a school. And just to give you a quick update on that, we did receive our initial funding startup money, for fifty thousand dollars, so we're off to the list. All right, cemetery committee meeting is Wednesday, No- March the fifteenth, November the fifteenth, three p.m. Here's one that everybody needs to take notice to, y'all. Uh, Central Florida Electric Co-op, for all you folks that are looking for this fiber, white fiber that's coming in, there will be a fiber chat at the firehouse, that's at the new firehouse. It is Thursday, November the sixteenth, at five thirty p.m. And our next town council meeting will be Monday, November the twentieth, that's the week of Thanksgiving. The town hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday of that week. And then we have one last thing, your deadline for the, what would you do if you were elected mayor? From the Florida League?
Florida League of Mayors.
Mayors, yeah, contesting, they, uh, decided this is going, I don't know what their organization was for this.
So they ran, first place is a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, yeah.
Um, oh, one, first place is five hundred dollars, second place two fifty, third place is a different.
Just give that to all the kids at the school, okay?
Six, seven, three, four.
That would be.
Yeah, let me think about it.
Would be in there. And with that being said, Sue, I will turn it over to you.
Can I ask a quick question, if you're curious, who's going to judge this SA contest for the.
It is, it is county, I mean statewide, it will be sent back to them. Yes, sir.
There's gonna be some interesting answers.
Yeah, I said it, there'll be some interesting.
It's cute, because in here, they talk all about home role, they want you to explain like what you do as mayor, and it's, you know, explaining your roles with them. All right, so we have a long agenda tonight, but first up is the first reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero three, which is, um, following our public hearing this afternoon. Read the title along to the record, so ordinance number twenty-three dash zero three, ordinance of the town of Bronson, Florida, amending the town Bronson Comprehensive Plan relating to an amendment to the text Future Land Use Plan Map Series and Future Land Use Plan Map of the Town Bronson Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application CPA twenty-three dot zero one by the town council, under the regular amended procedures established in section one sixty-three dot three one six one, through one sixty-three dot two two four eight for the statutes providing for amending the text Future Land Use Plan Map Series and the Future Land Use Plan Map of the Comprehensive Plan based upon evaluation completed by the town to reflect changes in state requirements pursuant to section one sixty-three dot three one nine one for the statutes amended, providing some ability, repealing all ordinances implied for life and effective fitness.
Okay, we had a final thought, meeting on this, a public meeting. Uh, we discussed all the pros and cons and all the changes and updates, this nice lady comes just right here, and it was the recommendation by that board to bring it to this board for a recommendation. So if there's any discussion from the general public at this time, we will take any questions. It is so exciting. So. Do we need?
Do we need a vote on that?
Do we need to vote? Yeah.
Make a motion for the first reading.
Good, okay.
So we need to vote on the first reading, okay? I'll accept the motion then.
Oh, so, yeah. Make sure we say it right.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-three dash oh three on first reading and transmit to the state land planning agency for commerce.
Is oh three, or is it oh one?
Oh three.
Ordinance is twenty-three oh three, the, your amendment number is CPA twenty-three thousand zero.
Okay, so we're good, everything's proper, all right. We have, um, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Right, we're good. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying motion carries. We have the first reading there. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
All right, next up on the agenda is update from, um, JD Pro on Olomah Estates, and I just added something to your packet.
All right, you take your good seat, come to any places.
Right here, and then gentlemen, come up. Hey, look great.
Good evening, Halsey, um, my name is Chris Fox, I'm the director of engineering for JD Pro, and I believe you gave you a little PowerPoint presentation that we put together, just to, I know some of you were on board last night of the month's project, and I know there's been some changes, so we want to introduce the project again to the new board members, as well as introduce ourselves and the developer builder of the subdivision. So the project is Olomah Estates, residential development, is located off Main Street, uh, this morning here, um, it's the one that's currently under construction, the first two blocks are being constructed. The infrastructure is actually just about complete, but we're going through the process with the city, or the town, to clear the infrastructure of it, so I'm not calling it, as well as getting it planned and recorded, so the owners can, yeah, start, uh, moving forward. Um, just a little bit about JD Pro, um, we're an engineering company here located in, uh, in Gainesville, we've been there since, um, the mid-nineties, so over thirty years. We have a little over fifty employees, uh, we do have an office in, uh, St. Augustine, Calaisen, but our main headquarters here in Gainesville, um, we've been practicing here throughout the years. Um, and so this is one of our, this is our first project here in the town of Bronson, with that work in the county, um, but not necessarily in the town that's here for Bronson. Just a few notable projects that we've worked on throughout the years is, uh, DPO CAR, um, project projects through, you know, Florida, um, as well as some other miscellaneous private projects, uh, developments. Um, as well as, I know, um, you guys probably used to, uh, town theater, that was one of the developments that we're covering. And the actual, the, uh, developer and the home builder is Luis Diaz, with DeBro's Design and Construction, he is actually one of the home builders and owner of two, so they're moving their, uh, they're part of the group that's gonna be working on this project down here. So overall, you know, the project goal, right now, from master plan, we talked with Sue about the town, roughly has fifteen more lots, they're all between a third acre and a half acre. Um, but our goal with the town is to connect future lots to wastewater, and so we've been working with Sue and the, uh, public, uh, works and utility department to figure out how to feed sewer out there. Uh, one option, it's a fairly pricey option, is we could put a load station, you know, on the, on the development and the extended force main, um, down to the connection point. Now, with that, um, you know, to help with capital costs of that, we're, um, you know, the future phases, we're gonna talk with Sue and hopefully request to be able to increase the density of the development to pay for those costs. Um, I'm sure everybody's heard of cost of construction for these, it keeps moving up daily, um, but a load station of that size and the extension of force main, it's probably gonna be in the four hundred thousand dollar range. Um, so the project to be able to, to get sewer throughout the development, I know as a whole of the town itself, is to make sure that a lot of the residential developments within the town limits, uh, connect onto public utilities. We do have, uh, public water out there, so we are connected to the public water, uh, right now, there is no wastewater out there, so the first two lots are ready to be on subject. Those are a half acre, which is allowed by the town's code, um, and so moving forward, we hope to be able to put actual municipal wastewater out on the property. Um, one, one benefit of that too, is the land development regulations by the town currently do not have lot-sized metals for, um, connecting to wastewater, but we would try and stay around at least a half acre for the lots, um, to increase the density. Um, and I know in the back there, a little bit of a master plan, that's what we have right now, um, again, this is just what we're thinking, at least to kind of lay it out. Um, the first two boxes you can see right there are up, are a button, uh, Main Street, and then we have constructed the runway into the roundabout. So, um, and there is the infrastructure that is in, we're working with Sue, um, to get that inspected, so hopefully in the next few weeks it'll get inspected, and then we can start, uh, getting those homes constructed. So we're hoping that this will be a viable project for town, we want it to be a great, you know, starter subdivision in town as well, and three's, and one revenue, to then get people to start, uh, moving out here to live, and then connect to the city's goal, or, you know, subdivisions connected to municipal wastewater. So that's basically it, and I'll be open to any questions that the board has.
So the roundabout and stuff is already there, and there's signs there, so we're just waiting to get that inspected?
That is correct, yes.
Which line did I talk to about last week?
So is that time table on that?
I'm hoping this week.
And then you can, after it's inspected, then you can start on houses?
Well, we're working through the plat, uh, we have to get the plat recorded first, um, and so I believe that, that'll be coming before you guys here soon, uh, to the board to approve, and then once you guys approve it, we'll be able to get appropriate signatures and get reported. And then that'll allow us to go vertical for that. Any other question?
First, you said half acre lots, you meant quarter acre lots, or?
Well, right now, they're currently a half acre based on the master plan, but when we go through, when we work through the negotiations with, uh, Sue and the town, the cost for the wastewater system, we'd like to decrease those to a quarter acre, to increase the density to compensate for the, for the station costs. So that is our, our goal for the day.
So that's how I can get, grab more.
I thought that was a pretty good compromise. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but.
I don't really get that close to nobody, but I'm.
I just don't want fifty new houses on, is that, that's my, bigger than something, yeah, that's.
Do I be that he has?
I'm sorry.
I'm in square foot.
Um, right now, these are, here's somebody you can answer, size of the houses.
Good for the folks. I'm Luis Diaz, it's Olomah. Um, the, the houses were, were kind of very modest, uh, first time home buyers, thirteen hundred square feet, fifteen hundred square feet, some of them at least has three bedrooms, two baths, that's ideal, what we see in the market, if we can hit them, and it is, is a tough market. Prices are still pretty high, and we, again, we're, um, we have a group of investors that have, um, invested because the federal government labeled an opportunity sound, so there is folks that are willing to, to leave in the growth of Bronson. And we believe that, that's still, um, like, uh, when my first started town theater, people were, were telling me in McInnans, who the hell's gonna move out to Jonesville? And look at it now, uh, and here, we have a couple of storms, and we see what's happening with housing in, in, in lowerland areas, uh, we need to offer some, some affordable housing for people that, that can have a, a, a talent, that's, you got all the ingredients here to, to create a good town feeling. And so that's what we're thinking, we're believing in that, and, but it has to start very modest, we understand that, the, the, the folks we get up, it's like stacking up a pile of wood and, and setting it on fire, we, we, yes, our first little kindling, first, to try to make sure that, that takes hold. So it's very risky for my investors, we know that, that's why we started with two lots. Um, no, we gotta be humble about what we're doing here, uh, there's still, you can still buy really plentiful lots for very little money out here for, but the cost, what we have to do to do infrastructure is expensive, but you can buy lots with dirt road and, and, and for seventeen thousand dollars, and you have a lot. I couldn't build it for that, if you have to put the road, the pavement, and all that, no, public infrastructure, so, but we still have to make it affordable for the folks, uh, to come in there, so that's what we're looking for.
So what's the price range of the house, that, you said affordable housing, what's your price range?
Well, that, that, that always is, uh, a moving target, we see, I mean, I build houses, and, and the price ranges are skyrocketing, I mean, they're, we're seeing prices, they're about three hundred dollars.
Yeah, do you have a price range for those?
If the price, technically, we need to be at two hundred thousand, and, and it needs to be above that, it's very tough to, uh, uh, hit that. We have, we have like the, the ordnance of the world in the Harlem, they're competing with us, and they're building, I'm not gonna criticize them, but I mean, they're not way up, but still, they're, everybody needs affordable housing, all, all around.
Yeah, three hundred dollars.
Cam, do you, will, will they have, uh, streets that run down where our house is gonna be later? Will, will they have streets that run down where our house is gonna be later?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on the, it's on the, we will, we will plan to do face by face. So again, we're, we're, we're not, we're not, we're not means we're gonna put a whole road and put a whole, all lots of our lots. We, we, we gotta do a test, try it out and see how, how the market, I mean, if, if, and right now with interest rates going a little up, people are very tight to their wallets right now because they're, they're, they're sticking to where they are with, with the low interest rate. The rates go back down, then there's, that will help us out. But right now we're gonna take it very easy, very humble.
Are those two houses that you built first, are those gonna be like model homes or are people going to, are these ghosts?
We, we're still my measures, but probably gonna want to rent them first and then see how, and try to see what's, what was on.
So they're gonna be like three bedroom, two, those two?
Yes, two bedrooms, two baths, that's, that's the goal.
Okay, two bedroom, two bath?
Three bedroom, two baths. All right, thank you.
Very long you have, very long, I think that would take very long to rent.
Elijah, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but someone just told me that there's a brand new mobile home going here in Bronson for a hundred eighty thousand.
Mobile, mobile.
Hundred eighty thousand.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know what that's, I don't know. But when it says it's three hundred and thirty, no, the house, he won't have to pay the five hundred, the fifteen hundred dollars a month, I don't hold that for him.
It, it is, it is compared to what you're paying other places, it definitely is. I mean, it doesn't sound like it is, but it, houses around here are going for three hundred and twenty thousand.
They're paying twelve hundred dollars a month for rent around here. That's, that's the rent, that's given.
On the one bedroom.
But when we talk about, of course, my house, we talking about houses for people who don't have a lot of money and they can't get, they can't get.
Because there's different levels to affordable housing. There's different levels to that, there's, there's extremely.
You definitely have a, you have a point there, Mr. Elijah, but it's, uh, it is, it's just a, it's out of our control. It's all about supply and demand.
You can't deal with it, it's out of our control.
You, you can't do that.
Just like I said, because it's such a verbal right now, it is.
There we sit there.
Like in any sense, the possibility would be to build them and rent it first to test, to test the market.
Just to give you, just to give you an example, there's a piece of property between here and Guffam. It's about halfway. It went out on the market last week. Ten acres, seventeen thousand dollars acres, mine, rented it with low water. But this is just crazy, and it sold in two days.
And that's cheap, seventeen dollars, right now it's.
This is, this is in the woods, this is where there's gonna make Christie there.
That house on the road where Jason lives, the one that's on the right, was listed at four hundred and fifty something thousand dollars before it sold. And it, and it was sold and his people knew it.
Rachel was listed there for five hundred eighty, five thousand.
All right, don't rent that, we got it wrong.
All right, Sue, what you got there?
Okay, so next thing we have is first reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero four, which I'm calling the safe surrender of infants. So I'm gonna read the title into the record first and explain why this is going to happen. So it's ordinance number twenty-three dash zero four, ordinance of the town Bronson, the county of Levy and state of Florida allowing shortcuts to the need to serve infants for surrender under medical conditions without criminal prosecution or abandonment or abuse of a child in conformity with state law, allowing the installation and operation of safety devices for the surrender of infants and providing a protective.
We're talking about it, we gotta, we gotta do the ordinance before they can start doing it.
According to the box and all of that.
So it's coming before you because in the grant for the new fire station, whoever wrote the grant back in the day included a baby box. Just to let you know, in my research, the only municipality currently that has a baby box in the state of Florida is the city of Ocala. And Chief Lynn and Newberry are in the process of fundraising for a box. They cost roughly sixteen thousand dollars, we can't even, trying to come up with twenty-five thousand. In January, the first newborn was dropped off in Ocala. The person who started the baby boxes, the name of the company is called Safe Haven Baby Boxes. She, her name is Monica Kelson, she started the company in twenty fifteen because she was actually a baby as a baby. So that's her background, and she was in Cape Town, South Africa, saw the operation of church and decided to, to basically come up with this. In reaching out to attorney Warren, I both reached out, and Wendy reached out to the city of Ocala because we were hoping that they had an ordinance that they passed. They did not, they opted for a twenty-two page contract instead. Which we could do, but they are recommending, the Safe Haven Baby Box people are recommending that we do an ordinance. Mark, can I speak to a little more than I can, but basically the ordinance says that somebody can surrender a baby up to seven days. This matches what the state statute allows for with no labor contracts. Up to ninety days, there could possibly be repercussions, so somebody could potentially be prosecuted. But basically the box will be in, like by the front entrance. As soon as somebody opens the box and leaves a baby, all the alarms in the world go off, they notify the county and the one who's at the station. You know, the goal is obviously to get that baby, you know, really quickly and, and, you know, take it from there. But we just thought it would be best to, to pass the ordinance, but again, this was in our grant. So this was something that the former fire chief was thinking about abandoning, the current interim fire chief was in favor of, so we've kind of gone back and forth, but this is the reason why the ordinance is in front of you today. There's tons of information in here about the baby box place and the background on it and all that sort of thing. There is another state, Arizona, has something called an Arizona baby drawer. It's a little different because obviously they only are in Arizona, whereas this is national. The owner of this establishment is looking to try and get this countrywide, it's still, you know, pretty small. I think the number was thirty, one babies have been surrendered in baby boxes thus far.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there anything that you can Google that's gonna say like, if I put in baby box near me, is it gonna pull that up?
How do people know we have it?
So in the ordinance itself, I think it's section G, it says the office of the clerk, mind me, shall disseminate easily understood printed materials and give information about parents' rights and then media information including printed material to create public awareness. They recommended coming up with a billboard, I don't think that's appropriate for Bronson, but, you know, some, some way for us to get the information out.
It's a sign that says safety haven or something?
Oh yeah, there'd be a sign on the fire station as well, but trying to get out, you know, like I break, put in the newsletter and we'd somehow distribute information so people know it's here.
Can I ask a question? Are, are we assuming that if this ordinance is passed and this baby box goes into effect, that that establishes a continuing relationship with these people in Indiana, that they're pulling the shots? Or they're, they're collecting money for servicing it? How are they involved, how are they involved by continuing prices?
There's a fee, there's a, I think it's a three hundred dollar fee every year that you have to pay to them.
And what do you get for that?
They make sure the box is.
You get, do you pay for the box?
No, we pay for the box and I believe it's some sort of monitoring or testing that they do every year.
I don't wanna get too legalistic.
Yeah, there's a, there's a fee, there's a yearly.
Separation of church and state, I have a feeling that their, their power operation is religiously underdirt. And I'm, I'm not sure that they're giving that money, is it contributing to a religious cause which a municipality doesn't have the authorities to do? Not that, has nothing to do with the baby box section, there's nothing wrong with that in the world, I, I would say. Just a little literate about where they're coming from, these people in Indiana. It's certainly that lawsuit which certainly triggered some thinking.
So may I address your first question? So the annual fee of three hundred dollars is for recertification of the baby box by a licensed contractor, maintenance of the baby box from expected use, unlimited repairs and replacement as a result of malfunction and not as a result of negligence or things. So.
Isn't that assuming that they installed the baby box to begin with?
Correct.
Which they're not doing, all right?
Yeah, because it's only one company that does it, correct, yeah.
Okay, got it.
So the cost of that is a thousand dollars to have the box?
Correct, correct.
With the hand, you need three hundred dollars.
I mean, what attorney here was making mention of is, um, there is, there was a lawsuit against Safe Haven Baby Boxes by somebody who believes this is a religious issue, and apparently has gone after other municipalities for passing such a thing. I mean, I'm not looking at it from that perspective, I'm looking at it from, you know, we could potentially save life here. So I'm trying not to get in the weeds of all the religion, religious aspects. Mark, do you want to speak to anything else that I'm missing?
Do you want me to follow?
Sure.
The only question, I wanna lift up my hands, but the only question I had was, is there a statute that says seven days?
Yes.
So is there a reason we have to have an ordinance versus a resolution if the law already exists?
No.
That was, that was gonna be my only question.
Yeah, so we have to go by this.
For instance, Ocala did not opt to have an ordinance at all. It just entered into a contract with these baby box people, and they're up to the races, and apparently they have saved one baby at least.
And if the town of Bronson has an ordinance, who enforces the town of Bronson ordinance?
Sheriff. And they need to enforce?
And the sheriff can also enforce state legislation as well.
Oh, absolutely.
So it just seems redundant to me, but we have to maintain an ordinance that doesn't need to be an ordinance.
This is, I mean, this is what the Safe Haven Baby Box people recommend, it doesn't mean we have to do it by any means. If you guys don't wanna do the ordinance, you'd rather just do a contract like what City of Ocala did, that's fine with me as well. But we obviously would like to do the baby boxes, it's in the, you know, it was in the grant. To answer the question that I asked, I have a grudge and a civil talent there. We'd have to get some awareness out there obviously as well.
And when we, when we get our marquee sign installed, I mean, I'm sure we can run that on the marquee sign as well.
So my question is, so the initial fee to get the box was included in the grant, right?
Yeah, the only thing we pay is the three hundred.
So we would have to put that in the budget, the three hundred dollar fee?
Correct.
Make the baby paid for that.
Mr. War?
Yes.
Tell me the pros and cons of what we're doing here.
Well, okay, let's, let's, let's get that, this is what's really happened. People in Indiana want to be able to say that, that town of Bronson adopted an ordinance consistent with what we recommend. This is, it's all public relations, that it also means if we adopt an ordinance, then it has to be published and advertised and so forth. It gets in newspapers, again, it's more PR for them, that's why they're recommending ordinance. They know as well as we do that actually their literature says Florida has no state statute. If you recall, they misled me to give it, because I assumed that they were correct. And nobody other than Doctor Warren, my wife, said, who's in the baby business, child education business, said, no, 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 there's a statute. And she showed it, so I gotta give her credit, but, but that's what's going on. I'm, I'm not saying there's anything intrinsically wrong with having an ordinance, but an ordinance isn't necessary, as gentlemen just pointed out. But it's not bad, so. And it's not necessarily bad to let the public know that you're going along with the program. It's education of sorts. Uh, wait, listen, I deliberately put in the ordinance, it said, and this is my own because originally somebody was suggesting ninety days. The Florida statute does not give you amnesty if the child that you drop off necessarily is over seven days old. So I put the ordinance in that if there are no circumstances indicating otherwise, that the town would strongly advocate, advocate for no prosecution if somebody did it out of duty, out of love, let's say, out of pride, whatever, you know, all the good reasons for dropping off. Not just to abandon a bunch of children. So I put it in there, I extended it to ninety days without a guarantee of non-prosecution, because we have one that's already guaranteed. So that's the one thing in the ordinance, that isn't this kind of statute.
Okay, now your question.
So without the ordinance, we would just sound a contract, with the ordinance, we don't sound a contract.
Well, you're saying it's not a contract, it's just like attorney wants this, this is just gonna get the warrant out basically. You're gonna have to advertise it, have to go through a second reading. That's no processing. It would be a non-exception. We don't need it.
Yeah, if anybody to talk to, O'Keller, on the, why they had.
Yeah, didn't you talk to O'Keller?
Why didn't we, did they say why they did not?
When I talked to the clerk and when they did, it was never mentioned only company that they had to do an ordinance. She said, no, I said, we were told that we need to do an ordinance, she was like, we were not told that, we signed into a contract with them. So I don't know where the lawsuit plays into, maybe that's now why they're trying to get you to do an ordinance, or like he said, public. But Ocala was not told they had to do an ordinance.
Is this one that we can supply, don't you want that?
It's kind of, we, we, we need to see what the contract is.
All right, if there's no emergency to do this, give me another meeting to do a little more research, see if I can come up with anything. You, you know the basics as well, aside from this point, but one that I'll confuse is to, I'm not so sure.
I have no problem at all with the contract situation, in fact, I'd pay the three hundred dollars out of my pocket if you say one thing. That, you know, that's, that's not even an issue. If we can do that, that's fine, but I don't want to be liable to some, that case.
And is there some kind of way that we could?
Religious, you know, ordeal or whatever.
I was just gonna say that, is there some kind of way that whatever we do, that we do separate ourselves from?
Well, they got a, the church, that was at the fire station, that.
People can claim whatever they want, they can claim something religious and they can.
Tyler, you are exactly what I think, there are so many possibilities if you want to, to look at the changing of products of, of what they have. A mother could drop off the baby and the baby is processed and so forth, and the father comes along and might play with it. Where the hell's my son, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, and, and, and a million others sitting here. But again, you're waiting against saving even one life.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. War, uh, just, I would like to give some more information from you.
I'll get ready for.
There's no kind of way we can knock our own baby box, like that's not possible?
No, no, you can not really get down to do that.
The answer is, but she's probably right, you don't want to do, you could, the state statute doesn't say anything about having to hook up with its company. The state statute just authorizes that sort of a facility, but.
Having to get your own engineers is gonna cost more.
But to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, uh, not moral.
But the, the bottom line for the fire department side is it's built into the grant for the new station. So whichever we do, we just need to make sure we're in compliance with me, fulfilling the, the grant.
Can you table it, is that?
Yes, yes.
I believe so, I mean, though.
Somebody needs to.
Yeah, I need to move.
Can I move to table the Safe Haven Baby Box, um, ordinance? Does that suit you, please? A second.
They're gonna motion in a second, all those affairs, isn't about to say that. Oh, same way, okay, we'll table that, Mr. War, give you a little bit of time, just some extra work on that one.
I have the contract from Ocala, so I can give you the contract.
You, you say it to me too, which I appreciate, yeah.
Okay, this next one's a duty officer.
Yeah, sorry, walk along. So first reading ordinance twenty-three oh five, so as you know, we tried this once before, I'm trying it a second time to see what, we, you have a little further. So ordinance number twenty-three oh five, ordinance of the town of Bronson and the county of Levy and state of Florida regulating the application of fertilizer with respect to timing, location, product content and composition, methodology of application, management of detrius and providing storage standards, providing for consumer notice exemptions in certain cases, training of applicators, licensing of commercial applicators, enforcement and penalties and providing of applicators. Okay, so last time we, attorney Warren, when I tried to model the electric family for a license ordinance, which as you know, you guys were not fair enough. So this one actually is a model that the state has put out there. Your biggest concern last time was the timeframe, the prohibited application period, which as I recall was July through February. The biggest difference is now the prohibited application period would be during a flood watcher warning, a tropical storm watcher warning, a hurricane watch for warning, or heavy rain fall basically. So, I mean, I, I don't think most people would go out and apply fertilizer if they know there's a hurricane coming, so I, I, I don't have any issue with that, but that's the biggest thing. So I, I, I don't have any issue with that, but that's the biggest thing. And then second is under section thirteen, licensing of commercial applicators. People who sell, companies who sell fertilizers would have to go through this Florida friendly best management practices for protection of water resources by the green industries, which is done by UF. Um, it is a ten hour course. It is a couple hundred dollars. Um, I, we now have to do this business impact study with all of our ordinances. And Emily and I are working on this together. We figured the only companies that would be affected in town would be Ace Hardware and potentially DG. I can't think of anybody else that sells fertilizer off the top of my head, but that's what Councilor Reese and I came up with. Um, otherwise, this is a much more diluted version of the model fertilizer ordinance we came up with last time. And again, just to go back, this is being required by the state because we're in the map. I did reach out to Andrew Carswell, the county engineer, to see how far the county has gotten since. I learned about this in August and they haven't gotten very far. So I'm trying again to see if we can make a little more headway.
For what it's worth, the state, which has really set the rules, and that's what they do. The state would like you to adopt this model ordinance. Where, and I didn't realize it at the time, when I just worked with it, where the actual county came up with their set of regulations. I, I don't know where they, maybe from the people who write the internal revenue code. I, I don't know. Theirs were crazy and the mayor pointed that out. I didn't so argue with them. This is, as you said, a little more liberal, but, and I was local policy.
And I think Mayor Burton also had an issue last time. Somebody did it about farmers and, you know, it specifically says this is not applied to people who have farmers.
I just, I just have a problem creating a rule that for whatever purpose we can enforce. We don't have anybody to enforce it. We're not gonna go hire somebody to enforce it because we don't have the finances to do that. So this is the state creating an atmosphere for us to do something that is absolutely useless to us and our customers. But the worst part of this is to go out there and have a woman like on the hillside out there and we tell her, she can't put fertilizer out between that time. So I mean, probably, I know, I know, I know, I know. And that there's gonna be a, of course, she liable to do that.
I would, I would fertilize before eight, eight rounds.
I mean, that's probably, she knows it's gonna rain on farmers.
So it's not getting the soil.
That's right. She wants it to go in there.
If I knew it wasn't gonna rain ten inches, I wouldn't fertilize because it ain't gonna be no good.
No, but.
It's gonna rain inches.
But that's for that. That's like agriculture standard overview. And this is Florida, so it's weather changes all the time.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it's against DEP regulations to do it for all that other stuff.
I don't even wish for this, but, but if you don't do anything and you wait until someday, State of Florida comes down and says, look, you guys gotta do this.
This really isn't that bad compared to the other.
No, 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 it's, 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 and, you know, the object is obviously a good one, not the belated act.
So if we, if we don't, and the county does, we have to follow whatever they put in if we have our own, right?
We are the only people in Levy County right now that I know of. The county has not done anything, but there's.
Going to.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, potentially they're going to do this.
Yes. They basically got the same concept I did because they're responsible to some of these people.
I think that's right. Because I think if the county does it, and I'm adding to it through our hope it comes to court, I think if the county does it, I think that's gonna govern what we do anyway.
Right.
So if we just wait and let the county take the, the lead, you look quizzical about that.
Well. Because they can enforce it, but we can't.
So they can enforce it in the town Bronson, within town limits?
Yeah, I think they can. And worst case, whatever, it's not the worst case scenario, but there's a statute that says that all Bronson has to do is say to the county, we adopt that ordinance, your, your county ordinance, we're willing to live with that. And then automatically, then it's their responsibility. And we, we, we overcome this enforcement problem that we don't have anybody to enforce it.
Right.
And this is not a political situation to me. This is a pure common sense thing as far as I'm concerned. It is just a waste of time, energy, and effort.
Any, any licensed applicator, I'm a licensed applicator, any licensed applicator knows.
And I used to, I used to sell fertilizer by the semi load, so I know, and I know how these people are. Like I say, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, you start getting in the face about some of this stuff and I'd be, I'd start going off the reservation, as I call it.
I need a motion to wait on.
Please.
So just table it until we see what happens with the county.
I make a motion that we table resolution twenty-three dash five until we sit with the county.
I think we do have a motion in a second. All these papers, they can't say that.
Absolutely. Question, let's smell, question on the fertilizer. Uh, you take, uh, Miracle-Gro, that you can buy at the store, that's what I plan to do.
Yes.
It's gonna have a variety of everything. And one I know it's got in it, it's got horse mouth, it's got cow's urine in it. Isn't that, isn't that not fertilizer?
All fertilizer we've made out of basically three major elements and some minor elements.
Protecting.
I remember protecting and natural. And, and then you've got some minor elements on the high end stuff. So Miracle-Gro is just a water solvent, a solvent. But there you go again. You are introducing the water to it, first of all, and then sprayed it onto an application with a spray thing.
Yeah, same thing with.
Exactly same thing.
So, so, yes, I agree. Boy, move it on, please. Give me a tip for that.
All right, I'm done with that.
Thank you.
I tried. All right, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two. Uh, this is from, continuation from the last meeting. A, uh, resolution of the town council, the town of Bronson, and the county of Levy, state of Florida, providing for the disposition of unneeded physical property items by sealed bid auction and effective date therefore. So, um, in your packet, you've got a list of items from the public works department and a list of items from the fire department. So our plan is to basically, um, we're gonna number all of these items. We're gonna hold a public, um, seal bids, solicit seal bids, and then we'll sell them. The proceeds will go into the general fund and we'll report back, you know, every day. So this is just a resolution to put back into all that.
And there might be stuff added to.
Potentially isn't gonna lose.
Take off fire. Do they, they clean down everything out of the old fire station here so those, you know, talents?
We're still going through it.
Yeah.
Just never listen, man, I would love that you, uh, hold five seconds today. Little guy that'll give the job on a painting, those are pros.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I would recommend you want that too. Just a minute.
Okay, we need a motion and a vote on this to.
To settle this stuff.
Yeah.
I make a motion except for motion twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Accept.
For the second, all those papers, they can obviously got.
Jared, we're definitely, I promise. We're close.
All right.
All right, next up is resolution twenty-three dash twenty-three. Uh, again, this is continuation from the last meeting in September. Resolution of the town of Bronson and the county of Levy, state of Florida, terminating the present fire chief prospectively with interim suspension, interim arrangements, and provision for internal appeal. So, um, as you recall, this resolution gave the former fire chief, um, thirty days suspension, basically, to, um, put in an appeal to council. Um, we have not heard from the former fire chief. This is really just a, a formality at this point.
Are we still hiring?
Yes, matter of fact, let's, before we go on this, let me kind of tell you where we're at. So I worked with Councilor Reese and Gail on putting the, and it's in your packet, the, um, fire chief job description out there. Uh, it got posted on indeed October second. I left it out there, um, active for four weeks. We have sixteen candidates that applied. Uh, three are internal, one is before you. And, um, this is my recommendation, and again, I'll lay this up to council. My recommendation, since the fire chief reports to the town manager and that position is not currently in the town charter, I'm recommending that this person now be responsible to the town manager and not appointed by the town council. If you guys are amenable to that, what we would do is we'd put together some sort of a hiring committee, myself, and then Councilor Reese, maybe Wendy, maybe somebody from the fire department. You know, we need at least three people to kind of look through all the resumes, make a determination as to who we would, um, who we would interview, and then, you know, publicly hire. That's my recommendation.
What's the process for us to do that?
Actually, what Sue just recited, somebody would make a motion to put that into effect. It pretty much happened. If, if only your name party is to me.
But I mean, that's the way it should be.
That is how it needs to be. The only people that need to be appointed by the council are the attorney and the town manager.
Yeah.
Right. It keeps us.
But.
It's not what it's supposed to be though.
No, the fire chief position is not in the charter.
No, but it's, it's, you're.
What I'm saying is, it, uh, I, I think the council should have some kind of, well, I guess you'd be on there, right?
Yeah, well, I would do.
I, I think that would be, that's fine.
So Tyler will have a, a standing on.
Yeah, me or later on, whoever else is in the fire department. If we ever had to hire again.
Who would you want the third person to be? Would you want to be Wendy?
I think we should have three or four. Me, you.
You usually don't want any.
That's, that's too many.
You want a hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want a hard.
So somebody from the fire department?
I don't care.
I mean, that was my thought, somebody from the fire department. Do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation is, uh, I did, I agree with this and I had a meeting with Sue. And it was one of the things that came up is maybe talk to Mitch Harrell with the county, uh, because I don't think he's gonna be applying for the job.
Yeah.
So it would be, uh, no conflict of interest and you get somebody with fire department experience, or you can say, you know, a fire department representative to be chosen by the other two. But that would be my recommendation because then you could choose Mitch Harrell or Chief Hughes or somebody else. In fact, you could choose Willston Fire Chief or Chief Wood Fire Chief just to, to sit on it as an expert.
Yeah, he's absolutely right. If that, that's.
You could do a little bit of the bat and just do the three.
No.
No.
They're trying to figure out who the third person would be.
No. What he says is give these two authority to choose the third in some, you know, discretionary way. If it's appropriate, they would say about it, we would do. And, uh, I agree with her.
So somebody with prior experience, which we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. With the object of, of doing, you know, what he tells you.
Correct, yeah, and I certainly know.
He, 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 you know. Interviewing candidates and recommending retention to the council or actual authority to do the hiring.
My recommendation is that we have, I have the ultimate decision to.
Counselor, do with that?
Does that change, um, about firing?
You don't mind that?
No. You know, you got, you got two of the end two of the people here, that's what we got to do up the first time. We don't leave that.
I think you'd probably find that the ordinance, I don't have it front of me, that the ordinance creating the fire department somewhere said that the fire chief, I know it doesn't, is selected by the council. So the, the odds are that the council would accept their recommendation, but I think it probably should be a recommendation.
I would count it.
To the council.
Yes, a recommendation of.
I would like.
Who hires? Who hires? Final candidate.
We've interviewed the following candidates. This is our best candidate for such and such a reason.
And that's final. Let, let me explain the reason why I'm saying this because if I had the ability to hire and fire, we wouldn't have gone through what we just went through with our previous chief. I'm not sure that that was a great representation for the town of Bronson personally. I mean, I just went back through when I was type, you know, going through all the minutes. I mean, it, you know, that was a three hour meeting that we all went through. Personally, I would like, not like to see that happen again. That's just my personal opinion. You know, obviously I'm gonna defer to the council, but I just think that the ultimate decision shouldn't lie with the town manager.
I also, well, if I'm, if I know, I'm learning a little bit about my history. I'm kind of a, you know, wherever I'm at, I try to learn the history of the departments I work with or wherever I'm at. But I believe when the council was given authority to hire the fire chief before, when it was first created, it was before there was a town manager. That's why it was given to the council.
Well, what originally happened, and I know this because during that fiasco for a good week and a half, I researched all the way back until like the thirties. And the fire department itself elected their fire chief. And that is how the previous fire chiefs came into play. You know, fire chief that was removed for legal issues, um, we had a new chief move in and there became a lot of internal conflict on the fire department and the council took over appointing the chief. So up until, I think it was Lombardo or Jeff, the council did not elect the fire chief. It was within the fire department, but it created a lot of issues because of the new system.
Hmm. I think the way that the council sits now and the, the stories that have been told in the past, I think the council should have liked the fire chief. Well, I think we.
I agree with you.
Because we have had some, and I know that, I know that everybody's not from here, but there have been some horror stories about people losing their homes for no reason. And the truck pulling up empty. And there's horror stories alike that. And I don't wanna be responsible for any horror stories going on like that now.
Can I, I, and here we go again, I hate to bring this up like I usually do. What does the other municipalities in this county do?
They all report to the town manager.
No.
They all report to the town manager.
That's true.
Same way, same way with the county. Only people who are appointed by the county commissioners is the lawyer and the county court here.
So you're saying that the other, and I don't know, in the other towns, the town manager has the power to hire and fire.
Hire, hire, hire.
Chief.
Every department I worked with, which is about five or six in the north central Florida area, it's been to the, the town administrator.
I mean, they can do, they still do, I knew Chiefland when I was with Chiefland Fire. We would, the council had the ultimate saving, was on the recommendation, the town manager had the, the power to hire, fire, and it was brought to council. Because I know that there's been issues in the past, not necessarily here with Chiefland. My biggest, biggest concern with HR is if we have another incident, the way it happened, is the council going to do what the city employee handbook follows? Or are you guys gonna be seeing this separate? Because if you don't follow the city handbook and then we have a city employee that gets fired and you guys have said, well, no, someone's told me this and someone's told me that, you open yourself up to a huge lawsuit because you're now playing favoritism with city employees.
Let, let me say this. I think we have too many important positions that overlap that where a person has to be on this side for this issue, they have to be on the other side for this, the same issue and making decisions. We, we don't, we don't, we're in a place where we really don't have the staff, because we, we miss HR. But she has to get involved with so many aspects and it could put her in a situation in dealing with the employee because she is ultimately, she's HR. So if I, if I got a problem with a issue and she's HR, but because her duties may overlap, what kind of position that put her in, what it put me in when the positions overlap? We have to get a structure so things don't overlap, so everybody can do their job and there's no, there's no consequences in someone handling two positions that are crucial in determining if somebody has a job, somebody has different disciplinary, all those things. You know, and I'm listening even from my lower state and all these things that we doing. What we've been doing, we've been trying to make our town go on grants, right? We give grants, but there's no upkeep after the grant to support what we putting in. So what we do, we have to, we have to neglect. And so if we're gonna move, we have to be in a situation where we have to have the infrastructure and staff to make any of this work. Because how you gonna ask me to, to, you know, person to be, and no matter what anybody can say, sometimes you can't deny how you feel when you need to be neutral.
Well, this, this, I'm very curtious of what you're saying here. That takes, well, completely so much to, to hire more people to do this. Just for example, city of Williston, I told you this the other day. Uh, city of Williston has a hundred and nine employees and employees.
Right.
So compared to ours.
Think about it, is a lawsuit gonna say because you don't have the.
Exactly. You're exactly right.
We can't protect because.
We also.
You're not gonna be protected when it gets down to it.
Wendy's in charge of, again, uh, it, it does not, you know, that does not give us the ability to do that. And like you, well, you made a very valid statement, the fact that we're living off of grants, but we don't. And like you, well, you made a very valid statement, the fact that we're living off of grants, but we don't apply, we don't allow for the updates to continue moving forward and that's right. So I, I want to answer that, I don't know. But back to the stock that's on hand here right now and that's who's going to have control here and who's going to do this. And that's what we need to make.
I don't think it's, for me, it's not a control thing, it's just, it's a majority thing. It's like, you know, like the majority would be voting in for a firing for the fire chief, um, hiring or firing the fire chief. And to me, we got like a more, we got more chances of more people being satisfied than once.
But then he can't, so you can't say that he answers to the, whoever doesn't answer to the town manager, they answer to the council. So if they, if, if she's gonna, if she, if he doesn't, and that's what, that was a problem before, is he told her, he does not answer to her.
Answer to her.
So if he doesn't answer to her in any way, then the, then all the internal stuff with the fire department, she don't get involved in because that has to come to us.
He would tell Sue that he did not have to answer her from the time she got here. He would come to me and tell me that he was going to answer only to me with his problems and everything and he did this to us, he, they never.
So, but how, how do you allow? And I kept telling him.
Because of how.
Nobody said, how do you allow when you sign my paycheck, but I don't tell you how to treat me and how to be.
Because of how it was created.
You got a council, you got people, if he's supposed to do something, he don't do it, what's that, what?
Yeah, and I think that's. But that's the issue. We should have known about what he was saying then, because we didn't know about it until way after, we should have known.
Well, she's in there from. Like, yeah, this is the issue and this is where the issue comes into play. Tyler is over the fire department, Tyler was aware of it. If we have an issue with the fire chief, do you want us to come into a public meeting?
Yes.
With the potential of defamation of character if you are not careful.
They can't know what it is.
I will tell you.
The phone doesn't know what's going on, that's you.
But it's not about that. If I have a firefighter calls and says that he sexually harassing somebody, the chief is sexually harassing. And I come into this meeting and we reported in this meeting and you have.
You started alleging.
What, what's he there to say?
They know that nothing we can work.
She's.
When the word spreads around and that's what, if you're going to have.
She's, she can't do.
Yeah, and that's the thing is that you can't expect HR or Sue to discipline an employee when they are not the boss of that employee. That'd be like me trying to discipline Curtis, I'm not his boss, I'm his coworker. You guys have that power to do that, but you eliminate Sue's power because then what would happen is every single issue with the fire department will not come through the city. Because what are we supposed to do? If I can't give you a verbal, if I can't give you a written, if we can't fire you, it needs to all come through council.
But it didn't.
Is, but is the point is that if Sue make recommendations, if Sue, if Sue got an issue, she's come to the council, say, I'm recommending that this person be terminated. Is it, I mean, is it that she have to make a recommendation or she ultimately make the decision before it come to council? I mean, that's what we're looking at, right? If, if people have given her the power to hire and to fire, then it stays with her. But if she have to make a recommendation, then it's just going back to the council and the council vote on.
Addressing what, what Wendy just said, it, it does not detract from Sue's ability to, to manage and direct and be responsible for these employees. They, she is HR, the only thing that she theoretically, under these circumstances couldn't do is actually complete the firing of. Which she could recommend to the council, which presumably would listen to what she said. But other than that, the power of discipline would reside with her, she would be the person who manages.
Okay, so then again, and I'm sorry, I'm going to play this because this is on me and Sue. If we verbal, written, suspend and it is time for a firing and Sue cannot fire them and then we bring them into you guys and you say, oh, well, no, 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 we're not going to fire them. And I have Curtis come along and Curtis does the same exact things and Sue fires Curtis, what does that open the city up to? Because you're playing devil's act, you're not playing devil's advocate, you're taking two sides and you're playing favoritism with employees.
Yeah, look, you can't live in fear of anyone who can hire a lawyer or sue you because there's too many damn lawyers and too many damn.
But if you don't follow the policy.
The determining factor.
But my point is if you don't follow the policies and procedures and the council does not follow that, that will be a lawsuit that you could very possibly, probably a good eighty to ninety percent.
Does it say, what does it say in the actual handbook?
Verbal, written, suspension, fire.
Counsel is liable to make a distinction between fire department and other.
So you mentioned.
They can do that.
But Tyler is over, so Tyler worked hand to hand with, if anything goes on, then if Tyler dealing with the chief and the chief tell Tyler. Then Tyler comes to Sue and, and so they're, they're trying to figure out how to go, how to deal with whatever issue it is. But when it get to the point where they have, we, we came to an impasse saying that, hey, we, we need, we need to go. I think it would be agreeable, first, they're going to agree that this person need to go. So you already have them on council, so when the recommendation comes up, then council, then Walt Tyler will recommend the findings of what Sue, the investigation has done. And then you, there's a, you move forward with it. But you can't have it, you don't have enough departments to say, okay, this is not my department, they go to this department. When you got two people maybe in the same department that's dealing with the same person.
Let me ask it a different way, so let's say that something happens with Curtis and now, you know, again, we go through the, you know, verbal, written, suspension and Curtis needs to be terminated. Who do you feel has the ability to do that?
So the paperwork says.
No.
What does this paperwork say?
He's appointed.
So we want the town, the town council.
But with, with, with Mr. Curtis, we know what Mr. Curtis does, we had no clue what Dennis was doing, none of us. The only person that knew what he was doing was Tyler. That we had no clue.
So that's because Tyler was being a liar.
That's unfair from the beginning to sit up here and say, well, we could have should have, we just said that if things were different, we would have never got to that point. If we had have known what was going on, it wouldn't have got to that point.
Well, hold on, I think Tyler, Tyler inherited.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not jumping on Tyler, I'm just saying.
I'm saying he inherited.
He, he knew about what was going on, he knew that she was being talked to like that, he knew that Dennis was saying it, you know what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. I have nothing against you Tyler, at all, I've got kids, so I could handle the fire department, I'm just saying. Like, it sounds like.
Part of the issue is that, I don't, I mean, if you guys want to stay over it, you're going to have to be very careful with your wording, wording, making sure that she can discipline and do what needs to be done.
But Kevin did, she boots it for the fire school when she need to be fired.
She wants to, but she answers to the council, that's what we're trying to say. If he doesn't, does he answer to the council or does he answer to the manager? Because his paperwork says that the fire, that the fire chief answers to the town manager. Which means that she should have the right to fire or hire. Now, if he answers to the council, then we have to say that he answers to the council and then we have the power. So that's the issue right now, is does he answer to Sue or does he answer to us?
Because.
It says in, wait a minute, it says in the charter, even if Dennis worked for Mr., Mr. Mayor.
Fire chief position ain't even in the charter.
It's not in the charter, you know, it was the town manager. None of it is in the.
None of it's in the charter.
None of it.
But it, it is in the charter that, that the mayor is over.
Yeah.
The, 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 the town people that work. That's what it says, and even if he files them, he still has a right to come before the council, right?
Probably true. Let, let, let me point something out, let, let's take the case of Dennis because that's a real case.
Yeah.
Now, he was given, to do certain activities, he was giving Sue a lot of crap and she was telling him, you know, what she thought he needed to do. And she suspended him a couple of times and ultimately she said to the council, this is enough, he needs to be fired. She made that recommendation to the council and the council fired him.
Right.
So this, the system, you know, it may be imperfect, but it worked.
It would have worked faster if we had have known everything. And I'm just saying that upfront, it would have worked a lot faster if we would have known when it was happening.
Okay, so there's two issues, number one, if the public works director and the fire chief are appointed, that is a whole other thing. Because appointed people have to fill out paperwork by the state. I know that Curtis has not been doing that, you have to, you know.
Hold on, oh, let me, let me get to all of them. They asked me to take over this department because they couldn't hire nobody.
Right.
And you still ain't going to hire nobody to do everything that I can and I'll be glad for you and I'll sit down and work on them. Because this is the thing, you know, they asked me to take over, they couldn't hire me. So I didn't sign any paperwork, I didn't sign anything.
So you're saying you don't want to be appointed?
I don't know what I was, they, we didn't have.
I mean, if you want me.
And it doesn't matter, I don't want my job, but it's this. We, you, we have to get officers' right in governing who's firing and who's hiring and all those things.
Right.
Because see, if there's nothing in place, we just going to be turning up wheels here. Again, when y'all do some stuff, do it happen to somebody that shouldn't happen and you don't have nothing in place, then what's going to happen?
Curtis, the, the default line in all of this is if nothing else is specified somewhere with, with, with great detail. Then the hiring and firing of, of department heads and people who, some people use the term appointed, people who are appointed by the council would reside with the council hopefully.
But this is the thing, if you working for the town and your supervisor will tell you to do something and you don't do it, you should expect some consequences.
Yes, you would.
I mean.
She, she can do anything she wants, including recommend you're being fired. And the odds are if she recommends somebody being fired, that the council is going to say, nah, I don't have none.
Yeah, so like you said, the process worked, but it just took the time for it to start working.
Because we didn't know about it.
Yeah.
They did not know.
And we know, if we didn't know by the time, the stuff that we got, listen, the amount of stuff that we got emailed to us and handed to us. That was a lot of stuff with a lot of different dates on it, we should have gotten every piece when it happened.
And again, if that's the case, and just like what he's talking about, then that means that has to be in the public. We have to discuss all of those issues in the public and you really should not be discussing anybody's HR issues except for mine. Because I'm appointed or turning worms because he's appointed.
And that really is the issue is, is because I don't think that you guys, I mean, and it's nothing to take away from you guys, I don't think you guys understand the complications and the time, the manpower that would take to communicate with all five of you separately. To know that you guys cannot discuss this with each other, to know that, Virginia, you could say something to me and under no means could I then say something to Sherry or anybody else because it falls under sunshine. So it makes it a very complicated process to try to keep everybody informed and get everybody's opinions and to speak to everybody without crossing the line. Especially in Florida because of how in-depth your sunshine law goes. And it creates a major, it's, it's very time consuming and difficult to do.
Well, now that and once. Ever, once all five of us would have found out about it, all five of us would have called town hall and said, hey, we need to speak to Sue. And then she doesn't do nothing.
Why isn't a joint issue so sagmo-sag that it can't be, be brought before the meeting? Other things are, that are touchy and sensitive.
Yes, and we just, I mean, like, we get emails, stuff too, so.
Sue has something terrible, I, it's, it's on them.
But it's not. There are instances where people can come up and say or do things and report people and if you guys want all of that brought to the public. Then by all means, that's fine, but when you get things that people are saying because they're accusing people or something. Or they're saying this person did this and it gets to very small nitpicky things, do you want to take the time every meeting to have it done?
Let me just say this, I trust Sue, first of all, I trust you. I don't know if I trust the person that's going to get hired after you, just being honest with you, I don't know, I haven't met her. The fire department is such an important structure of Bronson. It is, we are talking about saving lives in our town and unfortunately in our town, we have people who do not have the best of our. And it's been that way in the past and I would hate to, yeah, I, but I would hate to lose some folks just because somebody was hired who did not have a good intention of it. I trust you.
Wendy, can I ask you a question? Okay, somebody makes some spurious, and again, forgive the language, half-assed claim against somebody, you know, it's nonsense, but it's bad. This, the first step is, would be at, at Sue's level, right? So if Sue perceived immediately that this was nonsense and there was no substance to it, then we'd never come before the council.
But that, my question, and I'm, I'm just going to flat out because of Dennis, if we had an issue like this again and it was not brought to you guys, is it then going to create conflict? Because everything was not put on the table, that's, I just need to make sure that because I deal with HR so much, that it's a very clear line of what council does and what means to do when it comes to HR.
You, everything up to and including deciding what you think would be best for this particular employee. If you feel that it's necessary or that the only, the only way to deal with the situation is with termination, you would recommend the termination to the council. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Where she goes until the meeting.
But everything up to that would be in your balance. You would have control of that employee right up to and including recommending that that employee out. And the employee would presumably know that and he would know that if you recommended to the council that so and so be fired, the odds are at least ninety percent, he's fired. Unless you're doing something, to use the legal language, arbitrary and capricious, which I presume you wouldn't be doing.
Because anybody ever says that they.
That's a law, arbitrary.
It just needs to be very defined if you guys do, leave it with you guys hiring, firing that, it's very defined, like all discipline is done under the city manager, et cetera, sorry, Mark.
We, we can do that, but in the meantime, the only thing we're considering right now, unless I'm forgetting something.
Is divorce.
Is, is a resolution.
Correct.
To, to have a fire, find a new fire chief. And, and so that, that's the one that was recommended and the idea was that Tyler and Sue would between them agree on a third party and that would be a committee to make. Well, again, to make the recommendation to the council, right? Is that where we are? Or to that, that.
That's what we're doing.
All right, that's up to you guys, obviously, but, but the need for committee is clear.
Yeah.
Very similar.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, um, just something to think about, I know everybody's seen this, so I just want to give you a visual as you're thinking about this. In the fire service, we're big on chain of command because with chain of command, it's clear where everybody goes to for their answers and, and who disciplines on down the line. And if you think about any organization, I know a lot of you own your own businesses or you work for, um, a department or a company, a school board or whatever. It's very clear who you report to and it all goes up. In a company, it all goes up to the CEO and the CEO reports to the board, but the CEO manages and does the hiring, the firing and everything else. And ultimately, if something doesn't go right, the CEO is held accountable, just like the town manager would be held accountable. So as you're thinking about it, just, I know, um, you know, I, I did put my application in and if I were to work somewhere, I want, I'm not going to work somewhere where there's not a clear chain of command.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not working somewhere where there's confusion. And, and if the, if the different department directors are going to be on the same line as the town manager that I may or may not report to, count me out. I don't want to be in consideration. Does it, does that make sense? It, it's not efficient.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
So you only want to report to the town manager?
I think that's the way it should be, every other fire department, it, um, City of Gainesville, the fire chief reports to the city manager who does the hiring and firing. The county fire chief reports to the county manager for the hiring and firing.
But when you're equating reporting and hiring and firing, why couldn't you report in all instances to the manager? But if it ever came to firing, that would have to be with the approval of the town council, what is so terribly wrong with it?
Nothing.
That's just not how it. That's the way we've been doing it all the time.
This is the first place I've seen where the fire chief is hired and fired by the town council as opposed to the manager.
It was way different because before we had to live in the town in order to be fire chief.
I don't see anything interesting wrong with it, I mean, from a legal perspective, we're even logical.
That, that is.
All right.
I think what Mark's trying to say is it just would be cleaner to have one boss than having five.
But it's not, we're not, we're not.
That's a false equivalence. Honestly, the only person telling them what to do is you. It's only when things get hopeless and it reaches a point where it just isn't working and you say, look, this can't go on, he's done blah, 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 where she is the case may be. And you recommend, you, you made your decision, your decision is this person's fired. The town council reversed your decision, uh, they wouldn't presumably, unless again, arbitrary and capricious. I don't see anything wrong, personally.
Of course.
I'm taking Tyler for fire leader.
If he's over the fire, the fire department, right? So what say so does he, I mean, he deal with, he deal with the chief, he deal with the workers, he, you know, he has to have a presence at the firehouse. He come in, he talked to Miss Sue, you know, so what, what is the, I'm trying to figure out, what would be the issue, I mean, because we sit and talk like he don't exist. He has input, right? Right, he has to have an input. And so, I think the lines of communication, there was none. And that's where we ended up, where we are right now, because.
Who understands that they're trying to save face, I get that.
No, no, I'm saying, it just wasn't no communication probably before any of us came that's here for dealing with the fire chief. Cause if things were being communicated, you wouldn't have gotten a stack of stuff and saying, make a decision. You know, I don't know about who part is on.
Well, I hate to say that we're running out of time, we're running out of time. I'm seeing another three quarters of a page here, stuff we gotta get through, so. We need to come up with something, either this or table to the next meeting, thank you, guys, what you want?
Well, I think you can at least vote on Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three.
Yeah, that you do need to vote on.
Just please get that portion done, we can go back to the hiring.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, twenty-three?
Termination of fire chief.
Termination of fire chief.
Then properly move to second, that we adopt Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three. All those in favor, six of us saying aye, others saying most of the carry.
Alright, twenty-three dash twenty-four, we shouldn't take this long. It's a resolution of the town of Bronson establishing lien for water service payment delinquency. So just again, to give you a little bit of background on this, this property, two sixty-one Cobb Street, belongs to Mr. Nathan Homestark. Um, he has a business at his residence, nursery, he called nursery, in his residence. Um, his utility bill runs several hundred dollars a month. He was on a payment plan with the town of Bronson and reneged on his payment plan. And back in June, I gave him three months to get current with his bill. As I do have until the end of the fiscal year, September thirtieth, to get current. And he did not get current, his water has been shut off, it's been off for approximately five weeks now. Right now, he owes us two thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And, uh, two thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And so, looking to place a lien on the property. Again, he does not have water currently. And so, um, we have notified the health department that he has no water at his residence.
So then once we place a lien, it stops the account, right? It stops the.
Correct, now it stops the account, it's shut off, we're gonna shut the water off. This is as much as he's gonna owe, but I don't wanna be able to lien the property because I don't know what's gonna happen.
We had, he had two thousand dollars worth.
But you gotta remember that.
It was still going on.
Correct, until we stopped it back in.
It started out like seven hundred, didn't it? Like that was.
Yeah, maybe when this whole craziness started, I mean, when you have the ten percent, it can compound really fast, I'm sure probably half of this is make fees. Um, but, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole story with this.
We must be talking about twenty years ago, war mill's not that high.
It is when you.
He worries.
He refuses to.
When he got a problem with him?
He refuses to use rainwater.
What would he use in that?
I make a motion except for Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-four.
I said.
Probably move to second, all those in favor, again, six of us saying aye, others saying most of the carries.
All three of us.
Oh my God, Jared, you're finally up. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
I should've put you way further up on the agenda.
That's alright, I work for the town. Thank you, Mayor, I'm Matt Roberts, glad to meet you. Uh, my name is Jared Kutchman, I'm with Midtown Associates, I'm a total engineer for the town. Um, I'm here regarding a project that you may be familiar with, the FDOT Scott, fiscal year twenty-two, Wilson Avenue Road reconstruction project. Uh, through your diligence, coordination, through your direction, council direction, and diligence coordination with Attorney Warren, Town Manager Sue. We're ready to move forward to the construction phase of the project. Uh, so what you have in front of you is the engineer's recommendation award with bid tabulation from our bid results on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Three bids were received in response to the challenge in our town for bids to the project, to the subject project. Um, we reviewed the bids and the lowest qualified bidder was, which we recommend, uh, to award the construction contract due to John C. Eds Construction Equipment Co. Um, total award amount, four hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And that's fully funded by the FDOT Scott program, Small Greenies Promotion Program. So it's fully grant funded by contract number G one Z six zero, with that, so. I recommend, and since upon approval by the Department of Transportation, we're returning and see about the proper bonds and insurance tickets, then we recommend the project be awarded.
Alright, sir.
Make a motion accept bid. Make a motion, make a motion accept bid from John C. Eds Construction Equipment Company.
We have a motion and a second.
Any other discussion? Recite the amount of the bid.
Four hundred. Four hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Don't be that great decision.
Yeah, that's generally from, uh, you know, from the dollar general entrance, probably, or piece nine eleven, or yours.
Yeah.
Alright, so it's our paving, drainage, driven, it's eighty.
Any other discussion?
And just to let you know, we're pretty much, Jared and I just talked earlier, we're pretty much done. We just got our last easement worked out, so hopefully we can see some paper in the next couple of months.
I'd like to commend Mr. Warren. On our diligence, at least, trying to get these easements done.
And pretending to believe that Mr. Perez had been out of the country. Until I offered a twenty-five hundred dollar, then it was in the country.
Yeah, it was quite a long process, maybe, you know. And those required from me.
See, I had thought about, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, six of us saying aye, others saying most of the carries. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And from a taxpayer and a business person's perspective, how can you have the variance of this? Is this involved?
Varens?
So like, do you run the low, four hundred forty-one thousand and the high at seven hundred, is the same stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, Vanessa, that's why I heard, why not that come out here for free?
And that's the market that we're living in right now, it's very unpredictable.
That was my question, is it like this today? I mean, it used to be when we would put these bids on, and I've been around it all year, okay? And they would be, everybody would, you know, there would be a little bit, we're talking about, in a bid like this right here, you might be looking at twenty-five, maybe thirty thousand dollars, we're talking a little bit. Okay, now we're talking about two houses.
Right. It's, uh, yes, you know, that is almost a hundred percent difference there and it's, this is the market that we're living in and we're lucky, you know, a lot of projects that we're bidding out right now, we're lucky to have even one bidder.
Right.
Two bidders is great, you have competition there. And these, everyone's so busy.
Appreciate your work on this, but like I say, this is, that's kinda mind-boggling, and I'll push, I'll just.
It's just, yeah, I mean, it just seems, we need more contractors than we do workers to promote some competition because it seems, and some people just kinda throw a number at it and hope, you know, hope that's kinda what we're seeing.
I, I, just to give you, look, I can remember many, many, many years ago that contractors in and around Gainesville would have a job and they would time it to break, coincided with football season. Here's the reason why. On the weekends, on Saturdays, they would have to put extra people out there to, for the signings and stuff, for the traffic going through, and they got charged like four times for that.
Change order.
Change order. And it was crazy that that's how people would win bids based on, a football game at University of Florida, okay? And that's how they did it, and they would look at the schedule and make sure that coincided with that. So, alright, so, thank you, sir. Is there anything else, yeah?
That's not it, I was just gonna say, one of the largest differences in prices here is the maintenance of traffic items. So you can see, you know, the highway there is on it, four thousand, some change on that one, the road is three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars on that. That's.
Some services.
So the maintenance, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you all for your time, you get, sorry it took you so long.
Thanks.
That's alright.
Oh, it was an exciting discussion.
Alright. I can't, I'm not coming back, I'm home.
No, I'll see you soon.
Alright, next up is National E-Waste Day proclamation. So I received an email, which is in your packet, from Anya Gupta, who's an eighth grader in Boca Raton, she calls herself a youth environmental activist. And she was looking for the town to pass this proclamation, which I'm gonna go ahead and read. Proclamation celebrates National E-Waste Day, whereas Bronson recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and work to make the world a better place by adopting conscientious, conscientious living habits that will improve our daily lives and bring about a cleaner, safer, and healthier environment. And whereas Bronson has undertaken positive and successful waste reduction programs, however, we can further reduce electronic waste and recycle even more electronics. And whereas we must continue to focus on other electronic waste initiatives such as electronic waste reduction, electronic waste collection events, electronic waste educational materials for our community, the reuse of electronic products and materials and purchasing recycled or post-consumer electronic products and packaging. And whereas by encouraging businesses, state agencies, nonprofit organizations, schools, and individuals to celebrate Bronson E-Waste Day, we can further promote electronic recycling as an environmentally efficient and economically smart way of life. And whereas local community leaders can help encourage recycling by informing citizens about the importance of buying recycled electronic products, they can also help foster greater awareness of the need to expand collection programs for recyclable goods and materials by promoting the benefits of recycling investments for businesses. And whereas it is important that all Bronson residents become involved in e-waste recycling initiative activities and learn more about the many recycled products and packaging available to them as consumers, it is also fitting for Bronson to celebrate National E-Waste Day to help ensure a safe and healthy environment and improved quality of life for present and future generations.
She wrote every word of it.
Okay, uh, in the, pleasure of the council?
Well, it wouldn't matter until next year, because October fourteenth.
Well, yes, we technically agree for next year, yes, because we just need to print that.
And we're not gonna have a meeting next October either, are we?
So it's, it happens, it's happening.
I'll have it sent to her so she knows, yes.
How do you feel, uh, Mr. Pardon?
Your name?
Yeah, listen to you.
Boy, y'all, I get this stuff every day from somebody, uh, that's pretty good, having an email out there. But yes, uh, and I, and I have the privilege of just pouring this onto Sue, so that's. So if you wanna know how she got it, that's how she got it, I just pushed that button over there.
So, uh, I, you know, it's tricky, y'all, I mean, uh, what's it gonna cost us to do this?
Nothing, they're gonna sign it, that's it.
Make a motion, wanna do it?
I make a motion that we accept the resolution, she was right.
Probably move to second, you just. Yes, this young lady, National E-Waste, E-Waste Day proclamation to her. And all those in favor, she would've thought of saying aye, others saying most of the carries.
She has, um, just if y'all wanna know, she has two websites, one is www.eawayfortheocean.com and another one is www.penguinsforpenguins.com.
She's trying to be another one of that, correct, whatever, I mean.
Yeah, she's a beauty.
Alright, um, just next up is there's a copy of the last newsletter that went out, um, which was on this very lovely paper that they very well. Um, it was delivered to all the residences by Emily, our intern, who unfortunately will be leaving us next month because she just found out that she got a position um, entering at the state capitol. Now, right? Anyway, um, next up, email from Lindsay Johansson of Florida Lega Cities regarding the property and wind deductible. So you guys had asked for this, I think at the last meeting. Um, so currently, the town has a five hundred dollar deductible, AOP deductible, which of course stands for all other perils, so that is anything other than wind, um, so you know, it's your fire, theft, um, tornadoes, I don't know. Um, and then we also have a five percent wind-inhaled deductible. So our property portion of our insurance taken is thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. We have the options of increasing the AOP deductible from five hundred dollars to either five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars. And then same thing, we have the option of increasing the named storm deductible from five percent to seven and a half percent or ten percent. And we've got the page in your council packet that shows you, you know, how much. So let's just say, I'm just using this as the, to a worst case scenario, if we went to a twenty-five thousand dollar AOP deductible and a ten percent, um, I'm mistaken, named storm deductible, it would go from thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars a year to twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars a year. So we'd save roughly nine thousand dollars. Again, we'd be responsible for twenty-five thousand dollars instead of five hundred and then we'd be responsible for ten percent instead of five percent. So I just wanted to give you guys an option, I think you guys had asked Lindsay for that when she was here. Um, I don't know if you've had a change or not. I mean, I'll be honest with you, five hundred dollars is a very low AOP deductible, I mean, we have that on my own house. Um, I don't know if I would increase the named storm though, I mean, that's, that's a lot, that's my personal opinion, but again, I'd prefer that it was a lot of that.
There's a question, what if you're the doctor, from your vehicle?
From my vehicles?
Yeah, vehicle from the town.
Oh, the town, ooh. At a thousand? I think it's a thousand, yeah. And again, I mean, we don't normally make a claim for small stuff, I don't, I mean, as I'm still a licensed insurance agent, I would never recommend making a claim for something that's a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, because all they're gonna do is raise your rates, I mean, our rates have gone through the roof without making a claim.
And you might not, it would be a big issue.
Correct, so I don't, you know, I mean, we have some issues with some motor trucks right now, I mean, we're just gonna fix them. We're not gonna make a claim. Correct, if you, if you make a claim, it's just gonna raise your insurance. Right, right, so I mean, my personal opinion is that insurance is for, you know, catastrophic stuff. I mean, I'm not gonna make a claim for a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, I'm just not gonna do it. But that's just me, again, I'm gonna give you guys some options, so.
I'll leak you all in.
Thoughts?
Well, did we go with the recommendation of the town manager?
I would probably, I mean, unless we were saving a lot of money here, it'd be one thing, but I, you're, even if we went with the worst case scenario, you're gonna save nine thousand dollars, that's not.
You're not gonna save that, because something have to be lost.
Right, I mean, I don't know, if we're saving hundreds of thousands.
It's like the casino, each insurance company's always gonna win.
Well, yeah, of course, that's the way it works.
I say we leave it alone.
Yep.
Okay. Oh my gosh, my last thing, I was so excited. Alright, so last up is, and this is just an FYI, so you remember Ferguson Gray came in at the last meeting, went over the audit? They had some mistakes in the audit and in your packet, you see, there's a bunch of yellow corrections there. The biggest thing here, probably, out of all of this, is on the first, uh, label page four. Um, general fund revenues for two thousand and twenty-two decreased by, um, thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. And then general fund expenditures increased by, they originally had a hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars, it actually was ninety-four thousand one hundred and ninety-six, so it was a pretty big difference there. Um, and then at the close of the fiscal year, our fund balance is actually six hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars instead of five for. instead of five for five hundred and fifty-three thirty dollars. So, again, there's, you know, there's more options in the back, you know, discuss some of the other things they have to amend. I just want you guys to have a clean, correct copy. That's all I have.
That's all you got?
That's, that's it, right.
Good.
Alright.
Alright, Curtis, you're up.
This week, the first thing is, um, Hopeful Stevens, Lippel Station pumps. Two things, well, don't make those pumps anymore.
Of course you're not.
And so I'm looking at, you know, those pumps are one of those eight years, one of them is twenty years old. So I'm looking, I'm finding out from them, you know, maybe on a record basis that have them rebuilt every four years, and one every six years, decide to save money, because they're good pumps, or trying to change out the panel, because those are single-phase pumps, which they really don't need to be more than. You go to three-phase pumps would be ideal, so then it would match up the rest of our pumps that are three-phase. Now, the subway's the same situation, those are the first two stations, and they are single-phase pumps. Everything else that they put in are three-phase. So you have to change out the transformer, you have to change out the panel, to adapt, to move forward, so. I don't know, with the four pumps, I'm talking subway, talking Stevens Street, um, having the propellers changed out, have new cable put in, you know, on an alternate basis, but, you know, network based, changing out the panels, changing out the transformer, uh, because money's gonna be the issue.
So we need to get some numbers, what you're saying?
Yeah, see which way you wanna go. That's with the pumps. Um.
So you don't wanna vote on this tonight?
I wanna say money and candy, because we get a new upgraded pump, the panel part's gonna have to be changed out, transformer, you know, um, there's some things gonna go with that. Because we have four different pumps that, that are matching everything else of single-phase, I'll give you a three-phase pump, so.
Okay.
That's the part of it, I mean, you know, you don't know that it changed, I mean, just like some of our Lippel Station pumps now, the panels, they, um, were put in twenty fifteen, and now we have problems with the control motors. They wasn't designed very well.
From twenty fifteen?
Yes. And you're dealing with sewers, you're dealing with the, the gases, and, you know, you're gonna have a bus occupation and all of that, and that's what's happening with the Lippel Station now, especially our fire pumps. So that's the part of it, you know, you don't know till you get it, you have to a while. Um, discussion of the dedicated five hundred meters, I talked to somebody, it's the metering award, that fire department went and tanked it strong to get water for the road. Uh, the last couple of weeks, the coasting fire hydrant was broke, the line was broken, the fire department, they were coming to the town, and yet, I would rather they get water from the fire department, because getting water from our fire hydrants or here is, you know, is treated water towards the clothing, so the more we use, you know, we're using up the clothing, so we have an expense, to get water from the fire department is just water, we don't have anything, you know, so.
Is it non-fix, he said it was broken?
Yeah, we actually moved it out.
Okay, the way, so the way Williston does it, they got, I don't know what they are, probably four, six inch meters, and they come in, like, kind of say, Anderson, Columbia, they come in, they'll put a deposit down, they'll get the meter, and then, they're getting water for three months, they'll turn the meter back in, and then we send them the bill for whatever was used on the meter. Instead of trying to guess truck number, or, you know, keep track of, this truck was five thousand gallons, and they came four times a day, they'd have to pay the deposit to the meter, get the meter, and then put the bill on, and get it back. Could make it a lot easier.
Yeah, but, so how would that work, they would have the meter, they would go to the fire department and get their own water?
Yeah.
So how many meters would we have to add?
We need about five, we, I'd say about at least three to four.
Probably, you got Anderson, Columbia, then you have, um.
So the only people that can use it are the people with the meters?
Yeah.
They're tied onto.
They're tied onto fire hydrant, you know, they're, you're gonna still have a few bad people that are gonna maybe slip the meter off here and down, and then get some free water, but, then we ain't trying to be out there monitoring them.
This is just for the odd people.
Yeah, pretty much.
But ain't nobody here, they feel to be monitored.
Yeah.
It happens, it, it happens.
I think that's, I think it's gonna be the easiest way to not try to have somebody watching them all the time, and it's gonna be easier.
Have a timeframe on our meters?
People that manage them.
As long as they do, as long as they're getting water, if they don't get the meter back, we keep the deposit.
Exactly.
Okay, Wilson's proposing a twenty-five hundred dollar.
Yeah, Wilson does a twenty-five hundred dollar deposit, but the meter stops at thirty-five hundred.
Like, still, we could put that, we keep their twenty-five hundred.
That's why, we need good wheels, because they get water.
Sure they do. It would solve some of our problems, between this and what?
And Anderson, Columbia plant paying for the water that they're getting from us?
They pay for the water they get, and they aren't getting it no more, but yeah.
Then they do no more?
That's a whole bit of, that's good.
But we're closer to them than anybody else, right?
That's their problem now, ours, they don't want to get water from us, that's on them.
We're just proposing this going forward, because we've been going back and forth as to how we can charge the companies.
Yeah, let's make sense, because we gotta have some, some kind of way. Without having somebody at the fire department standing out there and turning on a long truck.
Doing the move.
And pick up babies at the same time.
Bring it up, we'll do it all.
Water, babies, whatever.
So is this the best?
I mean, this is just what Don would recommend.
Yeah, that, that's pretty good.
Pretty good quote for it. How much was it?
Thirty-five seventy-seven?
Yeah. We need about three or four.
That'd be a hundred dollars.
About fifteen thousand dollars worth of water, here's.
Get both?
About twelve thousand.
You really think we need four?
I'd say at least three.
Well, you pay, you pay three of them.
A minimum of three.
We figured, if, it's like Anderson, Columbia, if they do a big project, they may have two different trucks, right? If they don't wanna have the, you know, they wanna have a meter for each.
They gonna have a black Friday, is that?
When we had at the city hall, we would have trucks coming every single day, routinely.
Yeah, but when you get people that start drilling wells, you know, you have them come fill up. You know, they say, we would be coming, four, four times this week, we'll be the drill, so.
I would get four.
Uh, so about fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand, four.
Right, that's fine.
We got it.
Or we, we need to, I mean, otherwise we can't be getting money off of the water, you know, we're making it back, we're making it back in the water, right now we're not getting any.
Why make a motion, then, we buy four of these pumps?
I figured.
Meters, sorry.
Alright, we got a motion, and a second, all those in favor, should we type a saying out?
We can set up the deposit however, you see feasible.
I think it needs to be according to the pumps.
If they're thirty-five hundred dollars.
Three grand, they can afford it.
Twenty-five hundred, okay, because they're gonna get it back as long as they don't break it.
Right, right.
Twenty-five hundred, three dollars, for their volume.
They can afford it more than we can, I think.
Because they just gonna put on.
Because we'll get the meter, but they got to be able to deposit.
Yeah, they'll just put on.
They'll hold it, so just in case they don't get it back.
And Anderson, Columbia probably gonna come right back soon as we get them.
Oh, yeah.
Because if we're closer to them, then.
How are we gonna take payments?
They, they, Jerry says it's not nice work to be, so we'll see.
Food service?
Do you, how do you, they put the deposit down? Because you don't wanna take, you get a deposit, and then we have to reimburse them, so it just needs to be a check that sometimes we call them.
Please, I'll hold it.
Yeah, it's probably gonna.
Please, because I do not want to say we'll put, we'll reimburse the.
Reimbursing the next car.
We wanna make sure we get our money, they breaking us up too.
Yeah, it'd be.
They just had a center phone.
It'd have to be a good check or something.
Cashier's, something like that.
From their first one.
They can put them in the baby box.
That's right, man.
Yes, very good.
Yeah, y'all getting happy.
I want to first.
The lab testing results, I got the new package, we're going to, we're pretty good.
So is this, was this town a T-Pass result today too? Or have we not got them?
Yeah.
That's what it is, where it is.
PNS, either person.
That's so great.
We have a just warrant, probably.
Yep. Guys, I mean, I know it's a lot of jumbled here, but it says, all pressures were either non-detected or just above laboratory detection limit, these would all be considered satisfactory and very low intensity, so, that's great news, we don't have to worry about the loss of them, huh? That is so great.
It's been a local agreement, we need the county to have more control, there's business under things that would be said, you know, the county, the county is getting, is getting out of the business of doing things, um, for the cities. Yeah, we gonna have to start doing things on, on, to separate the animal control. Um, Sue and I met with them last month. Um, and they really trying to get, get out of taking any animals from within the city, animals that call within the city. Um, they really put it where the city's gonna be responsible for their own kill, their own animal control, their own enforcement, um, because right now, they really, you know, I guess what they really, that we had, they moment, you know, doing the hours, we could take the vets there, um, and now, you know, it's putting us in a situation where if they're closed, what we gonna do with them at night, we don't have a kill, we don't have any, anywhere in the houses, you know, once they start taking. So they're threatening to say by January, we need to work some out.
Wow, that's not much, no.
It's good enough, but don't have.
We got a bad solution, yeah, we ain't doing all that, but, we can't afford to do that.
So it's gonna be a, you know.
We don't have to pay them and sell them money to take over all animal control services. Ron Nason, if he come in and he was trying to stiff on, saying that they're not gonna do it for nobody no more, they still do it for Yankee Town, and student of her English and all that, they're not just gonna tell everybody else. I talked to our county commissioner, and he said that we just need to come up with a new in our local agreement, but we're gonna have to pay her some money.
To drop, wait, the, the, to take the animals there? No, do all of it.
Do all of it.
I thought we was doing it.
Listen, when I tell you that, as somebody that worked for a city that did animal control with the fire department, just giving to the county, because the amount of money you're gonna fork out for animal control is not worth it.
If, even, yeah, we're, we're doing it now, Celeste goes and picks them up, and she takes them over there, but now they're saying that we don't, if she comes and picks one up on Saturday, they're not open, now we gotta have a place to do it. We gotta have state-certified candles, we gotta have this, that, the other. You talking, you talking hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get a couple of dog pets with them, and some cat pets.
You gotta have cameras and.
You gotta have cameras, you gotta have certain sized pets.
Wash right up.
Yeah. And you gotta have. And so we gotta get pets.
We pick them all up outside.
They gotta, they gotta be fed and watered twice a day, they gotta be, you gotta have a bed on call. You have to have a bed on call, you have to have all kinds of stuff.
Take them to a lodge, you know, she's.
Yeah.
So the places that they're still doing it for, can we find out what?
They already.
You got the.
So why do you have a kitty box?
They're still doing normal effects, if I'm not mistaken, I talked to, what John told me is that English pays, what did I tell you it was, fifteen thousand, fifteen to twenty thousand? What they pay them a year to do everything. Right, if you, if we get a call, you walk home and come get a dog, the sheriff's office closes, this dog bit somebody, you some.
But I would say what's left.
Ain't nobody here. That's what I'm saying, we have to come up with a, we don't have that kind of proposal set up for them right now, though. Right now, ours is just, we're gonna bring you this dog and pay you twelve fifty every time we bring you a dog. So we need to have that, we can say, well, we're gonna give you twenty thousand a year, and you're gonna deal with the whole thing. That's the kind of proposal we need to be, we, 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 we.
No, I mean, it's not fifteen, we went off the number.
English is fifty or twenty, I don't remember.
So a regular person can't take stray dogs out there either.
They supposed to pay a fee to where.
If you have a dog, and you're dropping a dog up, you're gonna pay a thirty a dog, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, the dog.
I mean, Celeste, she picked up like twelve.
Yeah, I mean, in a year, we need to have, four, five dogs.
So they, you get them, can they come get our pets at the Bronson?
You know, we're, too, they usually have a dog, they fight, or somebody get bit, right, that's the crucial thing.
The issue is that they're not touching animals, that's what the entire county, that's it. People go off and touch dogs and cats and all that stuff.
Oh, we've been through, down with chicken?
They don't live in open, they don't chicken, they only go off and cats.
That's why they don't want this.
I don't know, I do know.
They need to hire some, like, more.
They either gonna do it all, or they gonna do none of it, one of the two.
Okay, we'll just find out how much everybody is.
So, I mean, you go for watches, I mean, I, I agree, I mean, Curtis and I left that meeting, and our head was spinning, but the county is trying to battle away from doing anything for any municipalities. Everything they say is it's about liability, you know, they don't wanna do building official services, like they told, um, English, sorry, you go find Jerome, we're not doing it for, you know, for anybody anymore. I guess this has been going for plan. Anne Brown originally came up with this about five years ago, that she wanted to just make it so that the county, you know, only did unincorporated areas for everything. Um, I, if you guys, this, again, it's wishy-washy, but we do have other options, there is animal control shelter now in the city of Williston, they just opened up earlier this year. Um, I have spoken with the council president over there, she said that they would also entertain some sort of a agreement with us, so, I mean, I, I would really agree. Wish would be when we could pitch it to them and say, or give us another deal.
Say, talk to their manager, and then talk to Wilbur, see who's gonna be the better.
Okay, I, I, one thing I want to tell you is, if you, then this is just pure reformy model, if it is on. If we contract, can you contract this out to an individual?
Private facility?
There's no such thing as a private.
I don't know if anything that exists around here.
And the reason why I say that is, you have nuisance alligator people, they go get nuisance alligators from the state of.
But they release them, or they kill them if they're a nuisance.
They take care of them.
Yeah, when you guys, you have dogs.
But right now, we have time to, since you have a sale.
You have a dealer right here in this county, you see his truck riding around, he's called Snake Man, he goes and gets snakes for people's. Now, uh, here's where I'm going with this, can, if you can contract this out legally, that's what I'm asking, to a individual, I can see where this would be.
But then what would you do, what would be the liability? I, I, because they have to make sure that they have all the stuff that we would have to have, so.
Because they're gonna be able to show up, um, on a Saturday night at three o'clock in the morning, my sheriff's office calls and says, hey, this name has bit its child, you got to be there now.
You got somebody that can legally do that, who's gonna take that responsibility? And then I'll be somebody out there.
I think because we're a municipality, though, we have to make, verify that they are getting for.
Okay, you gotta have a four G facility. You gotta have.
And then I have to make sure that they have a, their property insurance.
You not to assume that the pets are gonna be.
They really have to go.
I'm just saying.
The biggest issue is you wanna get them trying to enforce a city.
You know, it, it would be like when I was a station owner career, whenever the village gets, do the dog any kind of way, but don't let the dog be killed, everybody in the village owning that dog, you know, so.
I say, contact Williston's and.
Yeah. See what they got, and see what they crash.
Try to deal with, see who's gonna make that deal.
It's about, it's about idiot now.
I got one thing that, um, that's, I don't just, just, I can do it. Um, you know, we have that skid steer, and we need a trail for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great, it's good, it's good. We need a trail, we have a dump trail, but this is dangerous.
Sketchy.
Um, right here, you know, trying to tilt this, somebody's bike, and then they're down, I don't think we want to fight this down.
Don't get sketchy.
Dangerous.
I'm saying the danger is, it is dangerous, and somebody get hurt. A trail would be a lot cheaper. And I talked, you know, and they're gonna let this place be certified, it's maybe eight, eight, five hundred.
We just asked for all kind of money that they want to.
I'm just, no, I, I'm just giving you the trail.
I would, I seen one, look, look at Triple Crow, it's not, it's not a tilt trailer, but a regular equipment trailer is lower if they were work, but, uh, Triple Crow's got something on sale right now in Ocala, they're eight, or seven by twenty-four foot long, for like fifty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah, they're all state, all state.
Yeah, they're overstocked.
That's ripped up, right?
I know, I'm not, I'm not gonna talk about them.
Because it really got, you know, when you loan, there's gotta be. Cause it really got, you know, when you loan, it's gotta be, gotta be neatly secured, unless my deal to.
The tilt trailers are nice, but for the, uh, a regular equipment trailer, work if that's the, that's where I carry mine, carry on.
That's how we do.
Need a.
He was just gonna quit.
Would, would you just say? I make a motion that we discuss a non-agenda item.
I say, property better distracted.
Okay. Can we just do, uh, can we say, give them the authority to purchase the best price trailer, or do you have to have a set number?
Two, yeah, we'll see. You can give it discretion.
Discretion. I make a motion that we allow Curtis to purchase at his discretion the best trailer for all the mini X.
I say. Property moved to second, we buy a trailer. All in favor, again, signify the same, aye. Those anyways. All right. Mark, I think it's your turn.
I would say, say the best for last.
Mark is gonna be feeling him for Gale because he is fluke too, and that's a good, the parts unknown or something.
Right. He's, uh, he's got to go literize his place up north. So, he came back early, uh, to help run things after the last meeting. Cause he's normal for a short, so he had to go up for a week to, but, not in down the hatches.
What is that?
Uh, it's in, figured it's in New York.
New York?
New York. All right, so, uh, it looks like the first item I got, I got a couple of things, um, is a budget request. Uh, these are items, if equipment needed. I think you've got the, I think you've got the notes too. I've got ones. Can I give you all a different one?
They've got it in here too.
Just a big one, okay. So, just, just the one with the, the four, the four big ticket items we need to get approval for. So, these are items, uh, equipment needed for the new fire engine that we just purchased, um, and, um, maybe approval for you to have a purchase. Uh, the first item is four inch supply fire hose, a hundred foot length, five hundred square foot high, uh, on the board with G handle, but it's six, six hundred feet, um, seven eighteen for a hundred foot, forty-three open is the bill for the supply hose. And we have three supply hoes and fifty foot lengths. We're gonna, we need twelve sections of that. Uh, the total would be thirty-five eighty-eight. The third item is a, it's positive pressure fan. When we go on fire calls, we can evacuate the smoke from the hose. It's not just a regular fan. It's got certain designs. They tend to be a little bit pricier. Uh, we're trying to go, uh, without going forward, so we don't have to worry about generators and all that kind of stuff, so, um, the super vac, twenty inch, uh, battery operated positive pressure fan runs fifty-six sixty-two. And then the last item is, uh, the top mount deck gun. It's the nozzle that goes on top of the truck. It was used for instance, the, the engine, uh, that we currently have, the old engine, uh, has a nozzle on top and, I think it was the home unit, Brother Mighty, when we had that fire. Our tactic wasn't going in because it was so much fire. We put it in pump, we knocked it down with a deck gun so that then we could go in and make an interior attack. That is a safety thing. Um, the new engine, you knock down the front, so we knew that, and we eventually have to make that purchase. So, those are the four items that we're looking for approval of purchase. We have only gotten the one, um, one quote so far. We are looking at getting other quotes, so this would be, um, the highest prices. If, if we, if that was the lowest price we could find, um, that's as much as we would be. So, that's number one.
Okay. We need to make a motion on this, so these are our budgeted items. I was saying, correct?
Not really. I mean, we have some, and Mark and Dale and I talked about this last week. They have about ten thousand dollars in their capital outlay, for equipment, and then, um, about another eight thousand dollars. Right now, our, um, yearly payment on the truck is forty-two thousand. We budget fifty, so they have another eighteen right there. So, we really have about eighteen thousand we can buy a budget to go by. So, there's obviously a little more than what we were hoping for, but.
And if I get some more quotes, we can just approve it at discretion of the fire chief.
And stuff we need.
Truck can't go in service without it.
But, but they are gonna search for the older quote, correct? This would be as high, correct?
This is, this is, the contract that we, we got this quote from for all this stuff is generally the one that gives us the best prices. That's not to say they're the only ones out there, so we aren't, yeah, absolutely gonna look for more. I always like to get three, four, five.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the equipment for the new pumper, um, at the discretion of the fire chief, with he gets more quotes.
Well, we have a motion in, so all those in favor, signify the same, aye. Same motion carried.
This quote only good for third names?
What did you say?
This quote is only good for third names? And we got it on nineteen, about two? So, it's not good.
They don't fluctuate that much, but yes, you're correct.
Can you have a loop done? Well, first of all, let me just say, I wanted to tell Mr. Gale this, but he's not here. Thank you very much for doing the, um, fire week over at, um, ETS. My daughter absolutely loved it, and I love to have, y'all put Bronson Fire Department on it. I absolutely love them. Like, my daughter was just up in hills about it, but.
I heard it was a good thing. Unfortunately, my full-time job doesn't allow me to get here and participate in some of this.
Well, please tell Mr. Gale, thank you.
I would be glad.
Um, on a serious note, do we have any ordinance against hand handling or doing a boot job?
They, they done, they done in the past.
So, would you be open to a boot burn? I'll stand out there with you.
Uh, let's see, why not?
Well, if you.
Um, we just, there's some things that we need to make sure we have in place. Jesse is our safety officer, uh, we're gonna be in traffic, so we gotta make sure we have vests and, you know.
I got a vest for the house.
What's, what's, I'll talk to Gale, what's up?
Well, that, you know, cause, um.
You need two thousand, twenty-three.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to advertise the numbers, but we'll get to that. We'll advertise the numbers to the, the community. What we're doing with what we've got is, is pretty amazing stuff. It's always impressive. That's why I'm so.
Oh, I like it.
You good enough too, or not?
All right.
Did you all vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we're here. Ms. Sue, would you like to take the next part? If, I'm not sure, I mean, because, because my.
I understand. Okay, so, um, Mark is the instructor, and, um, he is looking for the town to donate. Basically, it's our oldest piece of equipment. If you look at Ice Cage, we're in this very tiny frame, but these are all of our, um, vehicles that the town owns. So, this is for, yes, everything. So, it's our nineteen eighty-six mini pumper. It's a Ford, a three fifty. Um, the original purchase price, I think back in the day, was somewhere in the hundred thousand dollar range.
It's nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-six.
That one's donated from the county.
Was it donated by the county?
Yeah, that one's donated to us by the county.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Dennis got it donated by the county, and then he kept it at his house for his cheap truck.
Right, and right now it has some issues.
So, it didn't pass its, I can tell you those parts, it didn't pass its pump test. So, it's got to draw water or suck water. It's not gonna, I can get it with that, but.
Yeah.
It's gotta be able to draw water and pump water, and it didn't pass its pump test. Uh, Ms. Sue said, I, I am a teacher in, at the Academy of Fire EMS in Gainesville on the east side of town. And, uh, I'm usually having for charging hose lines and things like that, and it would be a perfect little truck for that. Because it's smaller than a huge fire truck to maintain. For me, all I needed to do is charge it. I don't need it to draw water from a stacked water supply. Like, at least look into the possibility of whether or not that would work.
And it hasn't been in service, I think, in quite some time, right?
At least, uh, it, it was probably used two years ago, then the brakes went bad and just sat at his house. We had to get it towed to the fire station.
You can see it on Google or?
Yeah. It's, uh, but it's, it was one of the things that we were gonna get rid of in the seal bit. It was going, it was leaving here anyway, but if the kids can use it to learn, I don't mind doing it. We weren't gonna make that much money off of it anyway, I'm sure.
I think three members of Bronson Fire Department, one of the ones that were onboarding, um, are walking students.
So, we've answered from the changes.
Yeah. And, and all the communities around us, including us, benefit from the program, so.
I think we would benefit even more if Mr. Mark is gonna stay here.
I'm not gonna. I tell you, that's, that's one of the, my relationship with Gale, uh, was when we were working together, when he was with Alachua County, I was with Alachua County at the time. And, uh, it didn't ring the dawn on me when he retired that I could bring my students out here. And he's the second instructor for their fire number one certification for me at school. And, uh, once they hit eighteen, they fill out an application, and they get some experience while they're here. Ian is one, uh, was the first one, and he was here for three, three years, I think, before he was hired by Levy County, and he still serves the area.
And he's still volunteer.
And he's still a volunteer.
The other thing that Mark was asking for is we have an old, um, extrication set. I guess we have several extrication sets. You guys may remember four. Um, we just had one donated by, um, fire subs, so we have a brand new set. So, this old set would be one we could actually, um, donate as well. So, those are the two things that he's looking for donations.
The older ones run off the hydraulic pumps, the newer ones are the better ones, yeah.
That's the thing he bought, showed us.
Yeah, that's the new version. The old, other ones, you got old hydraulic pump, you gotta take out, look at hoses, and nobody uses them anymore.
Definitely not the way to go, but hey, um, I, I use it once a year at school, and I've got an auto shop over there to maintain the engine, so.
Oh, you need a motion on this? Make it out.
A motion to donate the nineteen eighty-six mini pumper Ford, um, and the.
Extrication.
Extrication.
But what is?
Equipment to Mr. Mark.
So, the way the process works is we'll come and pick it up and have it inspected by our fleet. I do have a process on that end where it has to do to the, the school board to accept donations, so. So, it's a process.
All right, I got a motion in, a sec. All those in favor, signify the same, aye.
Where's the other, where's the other, I wanna thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is, uh, update for responses. I think you have the, you have two handouts. Are they in order?
Yeah.
So, the one with, uh, predominantly red is September. Those are your medical calls, and the other one with the blue is your October calls. The red on the September one is EMS calls, and the blue on the October one is EMS calls. As you can see, that's the biggest chunk of the, the calls that we run. Uh, just to kind of give you a rundown on those calls, uh, for September, we ran ninety-eight total incidents. Four fires, sixty-eight EMS, and twenty-six other. That category of other captures a lot. Some, uh, examples would be cancellations, false alarms, lipsticks, service calls. So, ninety-eight calls for September. October, we ran a hundred and eight total incident, seven fire, sixty-seven EMS, and thirty-four of those other categories of calls for service. So, um, taking the roughly, uh, as a, I was gonna say as a three o'clock, but you just heard the sirens earlier, so that's one thousand two hundred and nine calls for the year so far. We're averaging about four calls a day, um, so that's gonna put us around one thousand four hundred and fifty calls a year. For a volunteer department with currently nineteen members, that's outstanding. And to be able to provide that service, uh, I know I've gone on several of those calls. You know, I can see that we make a difference, and, um, it's kudos to a volunteer department to, to be able to manage that kind of call volume.
Uh, and no missed calls for October, correct?
That's correct, as far as I know. We have some reports that we still need to put in the system, but no, no data to respond for October, but I'm aware.
I think there was one for September.
In fact, we're having, um, a little bit of a, of a different issue than what we had before. Ms. Sue and Gale and I were talking about this the other day. Is we have more people at the station now than we had, and so we're trying to, we're, we're adjusting on how we're managing the, the number of people at the station to kind of divide it out amongst day shift, night shift, and all seven days. But I'd rather have that.
That's a good point.
That's a general. That's a comfort. You might know by today.
Yeah, when, when I drop by and I see plenty of vehicles, that's, that's, that's always good.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And even when they're not there, we do have, uh, Gale just down the street, so in the light of, if there's nobody at the station, he comes in. Uh, or sometimes he'll have his aid bag in his car and just go straight to the scene. We've got Jacob and Marion Arnold, who aren't as active right now because they just had another child. And then also Bobby Kramer just lives up the street as well.
Did they have an active down there today?
No, the car was, car was parked down.
They had everybody on.
And I don't think we were dispatched that. That's one of the things that we do during.
No, they were, they were, they were already, they were already down. They parked behind it, they were.
That's just one of those things that we do. We see somebody, you know, that needs assistance or whatever, we just stop. We pick her. So, it's like, right?
People coming off of that way, we're not careful.
That's why, they, they got there and sat in the comfort, they have to sit front of them, because people like to make that turn at the tiny dogs or.
No.
And I'm one of them, so I'm missing it.
You know, we're doing it.
That's probably why I stopped today, cause he only looked at him, cause I make, I do the same for Steve at that turn.
You do better out of people.
Okay.
Um, new member update. I tried to do this the best I could to try and tell you all, I think it's, it's, once again, it's the, the one that has me out of my brain now, but we get it. So, we have several levels of membership, levels of certification. Support, uh, EMR is your lowest level of medical certification, and EMT, then fire one is a single cert. Then you have your volunteer firefighters that can do anything, or gonna be your state firefighter one and EMR certified. And then when you go above that, you have firefighter one, EMTs, firefighter two, EMRs, firefighter two, EMTs, and firefighter two paramedics. Now, while we're not an ALS department, some, some members still maintain their paramedic license, even though they can, with your basic license. So, current membership nineteen, two support, two EMR, one EMT, one fire, uh, six firefighter EMTs, uh, EMRs, uh, one firefighter EMT, one firefighter two EMR, two firefighter two EMTs, and two fire, or one, sorry, back up. Three firefighter two EMTs, and one firefighter two paramedic. And that doesn't include Mr. Strong, our full-time firefighter EMT, firefighter two EMT. And then the update is we have five onboarding members. Uh, right now, we've got, one of them is currently an EMR, one, two of them are currently EMTs. One of them is currently a firefighter one EMR, and one of them is a paramedic without the fire certification. So, we're looking to, to them through their background check, for their tests, for them to move, roll in the mix. Very good.
Mark, can you talk a little bit about the, um, sentiment over at the fire station since the termination of the previous fire chief?
People are around. Everybody's, is getting along. Um, one of the things that I mentioned, I'm not sure if I mentioned it in the meeting or not, but because we hired Jonathan Strong as our full-time firefighter during the time when, when there was this turmoil with Dennis and, um, and a lot of members. I'm sure you remember, we all remember being at the meeting, and it was this side versus that side, and it was heated, heated debates and stuff. Jonathan was kind of put in a difficult situation because he was reporting the deaths. So, he had become, Dennis was his boss. He did what Dennis said, and the word was he had cracked down on the young guys. And so, when Dennis was removed and Gale took over, the young guys still had those issues. And Gale and I have been working really hard, uh, talking to and coaching and mentoring the young guys on giving Jonathan a chance. And then I've taken on myself to have some very frank and honest conversations with Jonathan about the perception of how people first came on. And so, I can tell you. And so I can tell you, everybody is working with everybody now and moving forward.
So Jonathan is getting hired?
So everything is, is moving forward and everybody is working together. Obviously, there's still some growing things, and there's always gonna be growing things. But we're, we're working through it and, and, uh, everybody's working together. A lot of times when we have careers, we'll get going. Medical calls won't keep. Fire calls, I remember two of them will keep going. Any elaborate you wanna help with?
So how many, how many people did y'all lose in total, um, with the, with the fire?
Yeah, four.
Four, okay.
Dennis is, I think there'd be another person, a person or two, and that was it. Everybody else was retained.
The meeting, the meeting that I was at, it was very productive, um, and they all worked together. It was a great, great meeting.
And then the last one, I wasn't looking very forward till I saw that. Um, but I can give you a little update on it, uh, the discussion of the fire hydrant locks. Um, we have some ideas, we, meaning Gail and I, we, we sat down together and we formed two the other day. We have some platforms that need some input from, from Tyler. Um, we have some, some ideas on a cost, cost effective design. It's based on some of the research we saw, uh, where, we saw some designs that are out on the internet. Um, that are, um, proprietary designs. Um, we just need to, we're, we're looking at using some scrap, metal scrap steel. To, to build a bracket around it that we can, we can use a thirty-dollar lock on. And what it would do is it would prevent anybody from trying the actuation to nut the valve on top. So we wanna see if we can work with a local vendor that maybe has some scrap steel so that we can try it out. And if it works, great. If not, um, and we wanna try that because the prices, the number that we may need, um, would be cost prohibitive. So we're not giving it a shot first. I just need to know somebody that we can work with.
I got a couple guys that I love to shop. We can.
I heard that.
Look at them.
I heard that you might know them.
Yeah.
Joe Gassin has that too.
Yeah, Joe, um, uh, I probably call him Shrek, but, um. No, yeah, I live right on, does work for Joe, Ross and Thomas, Red, Redackey, and Wilson. They all do move stuff they can come take. See what they did do, build a prototype.
Well, we can, I know a lot of those folks are pretty creative as well. If we brought some ideas by them, they can help us.
You give me a design, I have a son that has a, a free television.
CNC.
CNC machines, we could, when you want to be.
And our thought was we would just concentrate on the locks or the fire hydrants on like twenty-four and twenty-seven. We don't wanna do every single one. I mean, we don't want.
Do we have a problem down with people turning the lock?
Every day, we had today. We had today, just today. Beth caught him, brought it to the person's attention.
Yep.
And again, the whole reason that this started is because when somebody came here and got water, then somebody from two miles away would call and say, what happened to my water pressure? So we, you know, stopped that and said, no, we can't have people just taking water and then affecting people from, you know, the other side of town. So we just wanna concentrate on the heavily, you know, traffic areas so that we don't.
What, what happens if, uh, we get it locked whatever, and then they go over to, to the ones that's.
And we use them?
That not locked.
Right.
That would be like you said, then they go like in.
So would it be better, what, what I'm saying is, would it be better if we just locked them all?
We could, but it would probably be cost prohibitive. I mean, we think we have somewhere between sixty and ninety fire hydrants. And it'll cost a hundred dollars each, I mean.
Do we know how many we have?
Deal says between sixty and ninety.
I don't.
I don't know if the.
I don't, I don't think it's that many.
Well, there, there, there are places that, that you, you would think that people are not going to just lightly pull, I mean, they're not gonna pull up near the city hall unless they do it at night. Uh, in front of my mother's.
I mean, they just did.
Well, I can tell you the ones that are further out, or you fall towards the end of the line, they're not gonna have as much pressure to probably provide the water that they need.
So what you're saying is, is something that probably won't indeed to be locked, right? Based on what you're saying.
Some of those, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, okay.
And, and it just, uh, to, we thought another question.
Curtis, Curtis can enlighten on that situation.
Lock them all. Um, because they're, where they normally go, if they go and got a lock, they gonna go somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's, that's what I was trying to say.
Right. I don't have a problem with that. Can we get one of those people to come up with a thing?
Cause the other day, like, two weeks ago, right down Main Street, they pulled, they stayed in the road, hooked up to the fire, and it was getting water. So that's, you know.
Crazy.
You got three houses right there, so. Cars having to go around them because they're in the road getting water.
I mean, I know, I know cost is one thing, but, uh, depending on where they go and what the pressure is in the hydrant, when they, when they take water like that, sometimes the pressure can drop too low.
Correct. One will drop below twenty feet inside, so it becomes a health issue.
But I thought, I thought everybody said, what if we need to use them? We do have a universal key on our trucks. It's called bolt cutter.
Yeah, I bet. I bet they keep them.
And then if, if another, if we were out on a call and say, Wilson or Chief, we need to kind of respond, um, that information for any combination or how to get into it would be that dispatch. But they have, they have a universal key too.
Yeah. Alright, so, we'll get, um, and give them this, whatever, however y'all are thinking, when we can call Joe and a couple others and have them come, come out and look at the fire hydrant with us. Come up with a design, then we can.
What? Any other questions?
The, the, I know it's not all in fact, with the, with seven, truck seventy.
We haven't really figured out what I wanna do with that yet. Truck seventy had an issue, uh, over the last couple of days. It was sounding funny, so we were paying closer attention to it. Um, we took it to, I think Ronson.
Ronson area. To the line.
Line. And, um, the timing belt did bad, and.
Motor bad.
Not a motor bad, because, you know, when the timing belt goes, everything's out of alignment, so the cylinders, you know, get messed up. Um, so it easily makes.
I talked with Ronnie, he had called me. I didn't know, and I talked, I told Gail, um, he could fix it.
Right, that's what I was told.
But his, he was suggesting that, you know, he has a motor that he can put in it, you know, take the whole one out. Just because the motor that's in it, the timing belt gone, the lifters are ticking, and, um.
The motors were no good beginning of the four building, so then.
So, so the replacement motor to get us back to where we were, I would estimate it was four thousand dollars. Um, so we're already in the process right now, um, with the, the FDA grant for a new rescue squad, which is gonna be our first out medical vehicle. So just because of how things are working out, we're not ready to, we're not ready to push the button on any of that yet. We wanna make sure we do the right thing, cause if, if, it's not gonna be something that we use enough. You know, we got other places, you know, we wanna be, you know, manage our money wisely. We, we just wanna take a little bit of time. Uh, we did have two tires that are bad on our brush truck. And so those do have to be replaced. That one we can't, uh, wait on, so we're getting that one done. Um, so, yeah, it's, we have an aging fleet, that's why we get new stuff. That's why we just bought the new pumper, and that's why we're looking at the FDA grant for the rescue squad. Blood duty.
What?
Thanks, Mark.
Get to more.
Uh, I have a question for Sue. The, the people with the compensation plan.
Yes.
They submitted us a resolution and in order to, did you adopt the resolution at the five o'clock meeting?
Yes.
That's why I didn't see it. Okay.
Yes, they said that the local planning agency should be.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
Okay, uh, you guys probably get a little bit lazy. I have a question to say.
You good?
Yeah.
Uh, committee reports, um. I've said, the only thing I'm gonna say is thank you to the staff for the truck or treat. I don't wanna steal anybody's, Sherry's fire here and that, but it, it turned out real well. Uh, we estimated somewhere between four and six hundred kids there.
And.
Good thing it was little.
Lot, lot of them went, they went to go buy candy in the middle.
Yeah, we did.
We had a little candy to start off.
Went in under the store, had to go buy a little candy, knew it.
Oh, he had, how many bags?
We had thirty-five pounds, we got rid of them. We had to go buy a little.
Thirty-five pounds of candy.
Well, I did three.
Well, I know I got a death threat from the principal at the elementary school. I'm scared of him all the time in the middle of the week.
And then I, I go, send him up there.
That's my.
Can you, um, put this on the text messages, the text message system that you use?
I think it's.
That's the one.
Over on for the children? Yes, ma'am. Because of the three surgeons, I think it's a bit much to put on the sign outside.
Okay.
Of the, of the three surgeons.
And you'll have to take a picture of like a center on preschool.
But I have, um, so we still do not have a light at the corner of twenty-four and Main Street. We still need that. Um, Mr. Tyler.
Do we, do we have a certified?
Yeah, we did, but Mr. Tyler, the light at your road is funky. Like, sometimes that thing.
Sometimes.
Yes, it is funky.
They're in the process of changing.
Florida.
Um, I think it's like three lights that they're changing in that corner, right, before you get too far as length of this road.
Yes, sir.
Um, and the one that's across the road from, from the, uh.
I saw it.
Yoga studio, they, they changed them out, so. Uh, I think Sherry said, talked about one at the intersection of Marshburg and Ishi. I called that in, somebody, like somebody shot it out from there.
Um, one of my kids lives in that house right there, and she said it's been out since the storm, so something happened to it during the storm, and she said it's been out since then. But Central Florida had a truck, a guy was under it.
I put a ticket in there last week.
So they were, I, I wasn't there tonight, so, but I'll check tomorrow night on my way in for Friday.
It should've been, yeah, I put a ticket.
But then he was out there working on it Friday.
So that's still working on the one on Main Street and twenty-four?
I don't know. Um, that pole, they're supposed to be removing that pole, but I think they're going on the.
State.
Opposite of the road first.
Okay, um, and, um, the street sign is on the corner of, um, Hurst Street and Pine Street. Like, if you're going towards School Street, it is, and it is unlettable. Like, I mean, you really cannot see what it says. Is there any kind of way that we can get.
We got some stuff going.
And we need another, I'm sorry, but we need another stop sign on the corner of, um, Glover Street and School Street by the church. Um, that's faded. This faded bad too. Like, it's probably older than me. And.
You can go right there, but you're jury.
Yes, sir.
Right there, you get to that point.
And you know, it's been spray painted a hundred times. But, um, thank y'all for the truck or treat. And, um, at some point, uh, how is the park situation going?
For what is?
Vandalism.
It's okay. There, you can hear people going out there spinning, but.
Is the thing?
They broke some, um, paper towel dispensers.
Cause I, cause I heard that, that they used to lock it up at night back in the day, and they didn't have them properly.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think they, they still would get into it and then they would still get destroyed.
Well, we would.
Well, we have.
Can we, I mean, the security company player helping that?
Uh, it's way too tons of.
Yeah, that's what.
Went down that bathroom over there by the, uh, and said.
Field one, they stay open.
And, and, uh, you, you might even remember Curtis, but it was a guy that was, he would actually be living there. He had a car, he had a car and he would take a shower.
They had one no longer. They.
Whatever.
Tower of the field. The tower.
So we've got two new cameras that, um, Nick sent us that we're gonna be putting at both ends of the park, at both entrances. And we just got another one in today, um, Curtis wanted one for the gazebo. So, um, those will be going out.
The gazebo.
In front of the health department, we're gonna put, uh, Christmas stuff up.
Sweeping that today.
Yeah.
And last year we put Christmas lights up there and they stole them.
And.
Yes.
That was a grin.
We don't have.
I know, right?
We don't have.
It's been booed.
If we're still thinking of shutting the park, then we can contact a couple of their gate companies, just regular gate companies, not security companies, about putting one of the drop arms.
I think we can. I, I, I think.
If he had opened, he'd do the cameras.
Okay, I was just wondering. Yeah, good. We're working on it. Thank y'all.
Donald?
Um, nothing really going on down there. The, the thing with Central Florida, it's about only really going on with the fire department right now.
The fire?
The, yeah, chat with the fire, however they worded it, we're gonna get, see if they're, we're gonna, we gotta do a lot of cleaning down there. Move some pallets around, an emergency manual still coming up. We'll fix them, get rid of them for them.
Are there empty pallets?
Huh?
Are there empty pallets?
No, the pallets, if I got a bucket, it's a cleaning supplies.
Probably about fifteen, ten.
You have one?
I'll bring my kids, drive, we'll fix them, move them things.
I'll take a couple of them with me.
They up there, they up there, go get them.
Yeah.
Well, if it, if, if it takes them as long to do it as it does to pick up the cops, and they left at the school, they ain't never come get it.
She's, she's reminding them, she's reminding them for a week and a half. She's reminding them for a week and a half. Ain't done it by yet. We got ten days before there's five hundred people there, so they fixing to get out.
Speaking of buckets, I got an idea for a fundraiser.
Start selling five gallon buckets, cleanse water with these buckets.
How much water?
For FEMA. And Tom McDonald specifically said.
It's abandoned equipment. It's, it's abandoned equipment.
What do they take the donation?
Possession's not against the law.
We have made it on.
You sure?
Um, I thought that, um, truck or treat was pretty good. Regardless of the fact that it was actually on Halloween. Um, but I want to, um, start looking back at the idea of doing Christmas movie in the park. Um, I got, I actually contacted Cleary, who did it before, and I was thinking that we would just be responsible for the movie part. And then maybe bring in some food trucks, or ask the churches if they wanna, you know, do a youth fundraiser or something for food. And then, uh, that's all that we would be responsible for is just the movie part. And not, we're not talking about giving away no toys and all that, because that turns into a mess and people are ungrateful. So if we just do a, a nice movie, um, she said that there was a big, um, tin piece or something that we actually made instead of buying, that we made our screen from. And she said that she, that we might still.
It was a sheet.
Okay.
It was a white sheet that they had, I guess.
Yeah. Is it still there?
It, it worked.
Is it still there? I mean, that's.
No, I'm talking about big sheet. It was, it was a sheet. It wasn't nothing made.
Okay.
I don't know.
We can figure it out.
You could probably buy a big, like, canvas pack, or, or you probably buy a big, just like sheet of canvas back and staple it to some, two by four frame or something.
I'll give you a sheet.
You bad.
I don't know. We, we, I just wanted to get what you, we'll figure it out, because I know that, um, we, we, we stopped doing it before. One reason was because people are just jerks to be jerks. But I mean, if we could do it, it'd be a nice community, don't you think?
Well, I'll tell you why I thoroughly enjoyed it, because this is some of the times, this is some of the only time that you get to see, like, your older generations. Like, out in the community incorporating with the younger generation, and it was so good. It was so good. Like, your grandma, I felt, that was the only time I really got to see her a lot of times, was out there, and it was nice. It was very nice.
Just not do it on Halloween, though.
I don't like doing it on Halloween.
No holidays.
Well, if you don't do it on Halloween, when do you wanna do it?
No, I don't care when you do it, but I, I mean, it's fine to keep it, but I'd rather not be out there on Halloween.
If you get the term out, it, it wasn't bad.
Well, and, and that's, the only reason why I really thought about that is that kids are gonna do stuff regardless. At least we have a planned event for them to do, so they won't just randomly do it.
Honestly, if we have, if we have any churches that are willing to take over certain events, we should let them. And then we have a participation in the event. But we didn't, like, we have to develop communication with our churches more. Because at some point, they felt like they were shut out, and I don't know when it happened, I don't care when it happened, I just wanna stop it from happening any further.
They say nobody.
They gotta be inclusive.
They did Trump retreat last year.
Yeah.
And, um.
It had to do with the danger.
That's exactly what I think, even though they still put a truck, car.
Right.
In the Trump retreat, but he was there. The one that caused the big issue.
Right.
Was there. He was there.
So I, I went to his event and I volunteered, um, at his event, and, um, I had a good time. There was a lot of people there. But if, my thing is though, if it would save the town money, is. There was a lot of people there, but if, my thing is though, if it would save the town money, if, uh, if a church wanted to host whatever. And then we could just have a booth in the, in the, whatever it is, you know, we can have a table from the town and then we're not paying for, you know, we're not paying for all the other stuff they are. So, but we're just.
My, my only thing with that is it has to be inclusive of not just certain churches.
Yes.
It needs to be inclusive of all churches.
Yes.
And I think sometimes all the churches don't get the invite to participate in stuff. So, and I felt like with the town doing it, we include everybody, it's not, you know.
I feel you.
That's, that's my only thing, you know, I, I, they, if they wanna do it, I'm fine with them doing it, but it needs to be open to everybody to participate.
But we don't have.
Cause the park belongs to everybody.
Yes, but we don't have enough people in the town to be arguing over this church and that church. We should just, like, forget the.
I mean, if you put it out there, if they don't come, they don't come, they don't participate, but it has to be put out there that you're welcome to participate. And that, it, it doesn't get put out there like that.
Frankie, you got anything?
Yes, sir. Uh, I got a chance to go down to the library. And I don't know whether you're familiar with the door back there where the air conditioner is at.
The slide door?
Yes.
Yes.
It, 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 it don't slide no more. Cause it ain't on the, it's on the collar.
Okay.
It need to be fixed, that don't need to be fixed. And I want you to maybe see, if you could, like, in the, in the men's restroom, um, they have a bar back there with the commode, with the toilet. But they don't have one with urine on it, uh, you know, what I'm saying is like, some men would be using the urinal and then, maybe because of illness or sickness or injury or whatever.
Right.
They move. And they call, they don't be at the urinal no more, they be at the floor there.
Okay.
But maybe you, I mean, it don't have to be nothing but just a, a grab bar. And that, that, and I meant the, the young ladies over there, they criticize people.
We worked our butt off.
Yes. It is beautiful in there, I can tell you that.
Those lights look amazing.
Oh, one other, one other, one other, uh, everybody, they charge a certain amount if you late for a month or something like that.
They're late, please, they're under books?
Yes, and I told her that, uh, that I would need a list of people that were three months late, uh, or later, you know. So, because the money would be, you'd be getting bigger and bigger and bigger, you know.
That's not our money.
And that we could look at it and see if it's in another, another kind of way we ever counted and get the money.
We don't get it, that's a counter us, no, that's all county.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, somebody, if, if, nobody don't really try to do nothing, is, are they paying? I don't think they're paying.
I think they'll come to us, I don't care, no offense. Nothing to do with us.
Nothing to do, we don't get a dime of anything for the county, for the library.
All we do is maintain the building, that's it. I wish we got money. So the county, so the county doesn't maintain that building?
No.
We don't, we maintain it.
Why don't the county get the money? They don't do it.
Cause they run the libraries. They pay the, they pay the people who work the.
Oh, this lady here, uh.
Dallas.
Yeah.
She runs the library.
Yes.
Yeah, they work for the county.
I haven't done a report.
Now they brought the library and the lights. Can we send, do something like a letter of appreciation for touring and maybe. Get some, a gift or some sort for him to replace and all the lights when this day is off.
If I had a part, make a board or sort of road to street center, of course.
Whatever, let, letter from the mayor, the town, give you whatever.
Congratulations.
Texas Roadhouse, get dark summer, thank you, like, they send those white ones.
Are you taking them?
Actually, very mad.
Make her happy.
It was not, it was beautiful.
Yeah, but that's not like a great idea. No, no, a lot of lights, a lot of lights to change out. It's a lot of lights to change out, it took him quite a few Fridays on this day's off.
It, it looked good in there, yeah.
Lot better than all different colors.
Do we need an election on that, do that?
Pack them all, they don't get long.
You know, I have a basket, that's a week, sir.
That's it. You good? Okay. You have anything else?
It'll be good.
Your word?
It'll be good.
Y'all had a chance to review your bills.
Make them, what, you pay bills?
I think it. Probably move the segment, all those papers, see if I can see, huh?
Ah, ah.
All those papers, and, and here's, leave it.
What are you waiting for? It's open to charge this thing, how did you plug that in? Oh, it plugs in right there? She, I thought it plugged in on the side, me and Nikki tore this whole place up, that's a brand new battery.